All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate all of your interest in making the Uniform Development Code the best it possibly can, that best it can possibly be. As we all know, this is night two of the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission on the UDC. And what we want to hear from everyone, we'd especially like to hear if there are items that we have not heard before. We heard a lot of comments last meeting, including some things about ownership for ADUs, some things about bulk planes. Additionally, there was request to reduce neighborhood historic designation from 75 to 65. There was also support of needing additional requirements for ADUs, some were against that. I'm going to go through this whole thing today. We understand there's different needs from different groups of people. And as part of this UDC update today, our goal is to recommend appropriate languages, languages and changes to the UDC from the draft so that staff can have a modern document that will allow them to better resolve development challenges. In order to accomplish this, we're going to go over the guidelines for today's public hearing. Those who have signed up will have the opportunity to speak for two minutes, and then staff of the consultants may provide additional information at that time. All the parties addressing the commission will be sworn in by Nancy and shall state their name and address for the record. As a reminder, we ask that you display respect for everybody and not applaud individual speakers. We want to hear your input, but we will not be engaging any back and forth type of dialogue. Questions might be answered during the commission's discussion. A respectful and reasoned presentation will help us hear everyone and enable the commission to make recommendations to City Council about the proposed legislative changes. Again, your presentations today are limited to two minutes, and those times are not permitted to be transferred to another speaker. You're only able to provide testimony at one time. The timer on the podium will be able to help you determine the remaining time. And for those of you online that are interested in speaking, Nancy will let you know when your time is up. We've also reviewed input from the citizens, businesses, and other interested parties throughout a variety of different correspondence. That correspondence is included in the pack of this evening and submitted as part of a record for tonight's hearing. At the conclusion of the public testimony portion and questions to the staff, the public hearing will then be closed. At that time, the commission will no longer be able to accept additional input from the public, and we ask that you not speak from the audience while we begin our deliberations. The commission will have further discussions on the UDC regarding any potential amendments that we might desire. And at that time, we'll then request a motion to vote and provide a recommendation to City Council to either approve, approve of amendments, or deny the legislation, legislatively, legislative revisions. City Council will then hold another public hearing where the public will have another opportunity to provide testimony on these matters. With that, I would like to call the meeting to order.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Michelle Austin?
Here.
Kate Fuller is absent. Carl Adams?
Here.
Brenda Hubka?
Here.
Aaron Martinez?
Present.
Hope Sweringer is absent. Tina Prang?
Present.
Camille Keys?
Here.
And Chair Hagerty?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. So we'll start with approval of minutes.
I'll start.
Okay.
Of the United States of America. We consider the Republic of Georgia stands one nation, and not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to start with the motion to approve minutes from last meeting. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, with that, we can call for a vote.
Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Prang?
Yes.
Ms. Keys?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We can now begin continuation of public hearing for case 2020-09. And I believe I turn it over to Brian Isom. Who's online?
Good evening, commissioners. Brian Isom here in beautiful Arkansas. We have provided the additional information to you all that was requested at the last, at the end of the last meeting. And I don't have any kind of presentation of that information, but if you have any questions between myself and Chris Brewster, I think we can answer them.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll start probably then with public testimony if you don't have any, or does anybody else on staff have presentation planned or anything for this evening? Okay. So then let's go ahead and start with the public comments. At this point, I think we're going to have everybody that's intending to speak. We'll swear you all in at one time.
Yeah, so if I could have anybody who has signed up to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you would tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission? Thank you. When you do come to the podium, you can state your name, and then you can either state your address, your cross streets, or what council district you are in. Okay, Chair?
All right, thank you. First, we have Tim Nichols, be followed by Blake Wertz.
That one? All right, thank you. My name is Tim Nichols. I live at Pennsylvania in Hamden in District Two. Good evening, thank you for hearing me. I'm a minister and a teacher, and in my capacity as a teacher, I serve some families who are fairly well off. In my capacity as a minister, I serve a number of families who are working poor on a good day. So I have a look at both ends of the spectrum. Our Inglewood housing stock was built for families of four, five, six people. Off the cuff, I know four, I think, families of seven people. One of them's got an eighth one on the way. Another one took in an exchange student a couple of years back, making eight people in the house. That's tight. But they make it work. Now, a lot of our houses, because we don't have families like that so much anymore, a lot of our houses are holding one or two people. A number of those people would like to run out a basement to another couple that's getting started, to somebody who's just working and single and doesn't really need a lot of space, or they'd like to have an ADU. I'd like for that to be legal. Making the change to up to four unrelated adults in a household, making some changes around ADUs, will take the Inglewood city government out of the way of good people who are choosing to do an objectively good thing with their own property. I would like to invite you to do that. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Blake Wertz, followed by Eric Anderson.
Hi, I don't speak much in public, so this is one of the few times. But...
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
My name is Blake Wertz, and I'm at, I own the address 4001 South Alatty.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a corner lot. It's just got, it's got the house on the very back on the alley. And I have a nice wife. We like to, you know, get our financial future started. Part of, the reason why I'm here was I was in the planning department this morning talking to Eric and, is it Eric and Ryan? Is that right? But they, they said, yeah, you can't subdivide or anything. You're just going to have to keep mowing that whole field that's in the front there till the end of time. Unless this thing passes, which would be nice. And then, you know, building is so expensive. I'm also a real estate agent. Building is like $400 square, $400 a square foot to build. And that really does hamper people's plans on building different types of units. So even though they allow for ADUs, there really hasn't been any built that I've seen. That's what Ryan in the planning department said. So, you know, when you add all these different changes, add a little bit of density, it really doesn't bring a whole lot of units. But the people that do take advantage of that means a lot to them. There's a lot of good people in Inglewood. I've met a lot of nice people even tonight. They, they're in opposition, but, I mean, they weren't screaming at me, which is nice. And... But basically, it'd be nice to utilize this property a little bit better. The way that Inglewood stands upright, the way it's set up right now, there's no way for this to be productive asset. It's just going to be where I come out there, once I go out there and mow it every two weeks. And usually you only have to mow it like once, once a summer because it just burns away where the weeds will stop growing. But, yeah, I mean, it's... See what else I got.
And thank you, Blake. That's the two minutes. Appreciate your, your input. Eric Anderson, followed by Amber Anderson.
Is there a favor if Amber comes up with me? We're going to just, we're married and just speaking together?
Yeah, I think together you would have, you can't give your time to anybody else, but yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Eric Anderson, and this is Amber Anderson. We live with our four kids at 3100 South Delaware Street. We support expanding opportunities to build ADUs in Inglewood. We've lived together in Inglewood for only three years, but this is a return home for Amber, who grew up here. We are fortunate to own our own home, but we want to support the best interests of everyone who needs reasonably priced housing, whether they are renting or buying. We have no current plans to develop an ADU on our property, but we believe that we and other Inglewood residents should have the right without the current practical barriers to building those ADUs. An ADU is a great option for a grandparent or an adult child, but it's also a great way for homeowners on fixed incomes to help pay their mortgage by renting out their ADU. It also creates more affordable housing opportunities so that our kids and our grandkids can return to Inglewood as adults and put down permanent roots, as Amber has. We want Inglewood to be a city where our local teachers, firefighters, police officers, and restaurant workers and others can afford to live where they work. As written, this is a small but logical step to increase housing opportunities for these people and the next generations, ensuring that Inglewood remains a vibrant city for decades to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer White, followed by Kevin Wright.
Hi, Jennifer White, District Four. First, thank you for hosting this additional meeting. I'm encouraged to see it and hope it continues. We must ensure that there is an owner on site when there's an ADU. It's been said before, but this is going to turn into a free-for-all for developers and investors to come and scrape what is considered affordable housing compared to our surrounding cities. As residents, we deserve to have an owner on site to deal with the issues that will arise. Absentee landlords could and will charge the going rate for rent. It is the same argument for our short-term rentals, that it does not help our affordable housing crisis, which we have talked about at nauseam, yet continue to propose things that will not help it. More than one ADU per property is a terrible idea and should be removed immediately. This will overload our services and that level of density we cannot support at this time, and we all know it. Look at Oxford. Per block density, I can't find anything that limits the amount of ADUs that could show up on a block. We could have multiple ADUs, and nothing will stop this, which brings me to parking. Where are these people going to park? With up to four non-related renters, which we should not allow either. That could be four cars per property with one ADU. There's no parking sign on the other side of my street, which means people would be parking in front of my home. Where do my elderly parents park or my guests? Subdividing corner lots, there's no difference in what we've already talked about regarding fourplexes. This will overwhelm the corners, and this should not be allowed. What happened to incremental change versus radical change? We have got to stop pushing forward with so many unanswered questions and concerns from our residents. As part of your recommendation, if we actually think we're there, I recommend that we hold on a final vote until we get these possible lawsuits and recalls done. We deserve this. Things are too messy in our city right now to make these types of impactful decisions that will impact all of our futures. And if you don't have radical clarity of every single page of this proposal and the impact it will have on us, I beg of you to stand up and say we're not ready for this. Be the voice of reason here because we're all counting on you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Wright, followed by Gary Kozak, I believe?
Point of order, Chairman, please. Citizens are permitted to, are allowed to testify once during the hearing, is that right?
Victoria?
I would have to look back at the minutes from our last meeting. My understanding was that we, there wasn't an exclusion of the members of the public being permitted to testify again at this continuing hearing.
If we allow one person to testify twice, does everybody get a chance to testify twice?
I would, if they had signed up to testify today.
I would like to, again, request that anything, it would be new information that is being provided at this time is what we had said before. So, I mean, they've signed up. If they feel like they need to speak again, Mr. Wright, I'm, I'm okay with that. And I think we just need to move forward so we can move forward.
Thank you very much, Colleen, I appreciate that. My name is Kevin Wright. I'm in District Four. Good evening, Planning and Zoning members. Thank you for being here. You possess a momentous responsibility in determining the future of Inglewood. Your decision must be based on thorough understanding of the situation. If any doubts arise, it is prudent to abstain from voting in favor of Codex entitled 16 and the proposed rezoning of our neighborhoods. It must be acknowledged that professionals have already zoned the neighborhoods, drawing attention to the limitations of our infrastructure to handle excessive growth. Any changes could even pose a threat to life and property. I would like to know if any of you have read the Sellers and Griggs Report, a 142-page report that's in the Calibrate Engineering Report at the very end. It's sitting there, and it warns very clearly what the dangers are expanding into an unforeseen infrastructure that has not been maintained. I ask you and beg of you to first fix the infrastructure, fix our utilities, fix what's broken before you proceed forward. But if you have any doubt in what your decision is tonight, if you have not read the 142-page Griggs and Sellers Report, please do so to make an informed decision before you vote. Thank you for your time.
I think you're correct. Gary Kozak, and then Brenda Francis.
Good evening, members. Jerry Kozak, District Four. My family homesteaded this land in 1856. I've lived there my entire life. I'm going to inform you right now that the city is under review for a lawsuit because of the infrastructure that is failing down in Oxford terribly. I now have the Railroad Department coming in because they fear that the railroad track could even collapse, and that would be a massive disaster going into those apartment houses. I'm asking you to withhold pushing this through to the City Council because of this. I had 1,500 signatures that approved us stopping that development down there, and one person opposed it, and the developer paid several thousand dollars to a lawyer to represent it. And it has forced us into, because there is not been any traffic study. Formal traffic study has not been done on that area. I was on City Council when it was developed, and at that point in time, it was already at its maximum. They did not do a study, and by their own rules and regulations, brought to us, I, the mayor of the town and the city manager of the town, that all of your projects you're talking about has not had a traffic study, and how much is that traffic study going to cost? Who's going to die in front of Inglewood Recreation Center because they didn't bother to put a crosswalk? And we got hundreds of kids go there all the time. How about the parking? Every time I've had troubles with the parking, I've got plenty of land. I'm a corner lot. But I had 46 kids in the neighborhood, and I put a barricade up at the end because the kids got, kept getting hit by a car. Stop and think about the citizens that live here and have lived here for a long time, and not just look at the, oh, great, we could build a city, we could build, 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 build. The infrastructure cannot handle any more building until they upgrade it. The city's been granted several million dollars to upgrade just the drainage system. It sure hasn't helped at Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brenda Francis, followed by Stephen Mulhern.
Sam, could you help her with the thumb drive? Thanks. Which one does it go in? All right. Maybe I want the other one. Let me get out of this. Okay, good enough. All right. My name's Brenda Francis, and I live at Broadway in Bellevue. I'm going to quote the Supreme Court. Speech is an essential mechanism of democracy for it means to hold officials accountable to the people. In a republic where the people are sovereign, the ability of citizenry to make informed choices among candidates, running for office is essential. The right of citizens to inquire, to hear, to speak, to use information to reach a consensus is a precondition to enlightened self-government, and it is a necessary means to protect it. The First Amendment has the fullest and most urgent application to speech uttered during a campaign for political office. This is Justice Kennedy. SCOTUS also called social media "the modern public square", and if there was ever a modern public square, it would be nextdoor.com. I have been censored. I have been doxxed. My personal information was published by an Inglewood Planning and Zoning Board member recently, but I was unable to see the post. I am being censored by the author Brenda Hubka. She has deprived me. She has deprived me of my First Amendment right to hear what she is saying, to hear what she is saying about policy, to hear what she is saying about me personally. Because she has blocked me, I cannot refute the things that she says. I am not the HG captain of 38, District 38. I don't live in District 38. I don't live in Littleton.
Thank you, Ms. Francis, for your time. I really appreciate the information.
The leader of the recall.
I also, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
To unblock people because...
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
She is depriving people of their First Amendment rights.
I also would request that we don't direct at any individual members, please. This is not the forum for that. We're here to discuss the UDC. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will go to Stephen Mulhern and then Sandy Kettlehutch.
Excuse me. Constitutional law allows people to respond as long as it does not create a riot. Constitutional law says that you now cannot require us to give you an address, which somebody turned around and published several of these people's addresses, personal addresses, and yet they marked out the ones that happened to be in favor of this. I'm telling you right now, I served on City Council, and we'll shut this thing down if the constitutional rights are not upheld.
Right. I appreciate the information here. We are following all the rules of Robert's Rules of Order and trying to make this as an open public process, just as we're doing here. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mulhern, please, and then Sandy Kettlehutch.
Hi, Stephen Mulhern, live at Emerson and Yale. Thank you for your service as Planning and Zoning members. We appreciate the sacrifice of your time. Many years ago, I too was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission here in Inglewood. And I know the long-term consequences of any decisions that this board actually makes. The hard work that you and the staff and the consultants have put into these updates in the planning process is commendable. It is tedious and technical work, and it touches all parts of the city. I also commend many of the principles that you've articulated. The summary is quite important. Inglewood's, seeking to have Inglewood flourishing communities, best practices, good enforcement, and the avoidance of non-conformities. These are essential, and thank you for recognizing them and stating them. A few weeks ago, I sent you a letter that voiced my concerns and opposition to the approach that you're taking with the ADUs and the multifamily overlay. These issues, as stated in my opinion, will fracture many neighborhoods, and I again ask that you table the approach that you're considering in Title 16 of the municipal code. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Okay. If, if your choice is to continue with the ADU and multifamily overlay, and you're serious about the principles that you've outlined, please consider some of the following steps. First, remove ADUs from the R1 zoning. That's a sleight of hand. You've created an R2 area in an R1 area. That's not fair. It will uproot the character of many of those neighborhoods. Secondly, and I think this is a fairly easy and elegant solution, defer all multifamily zoning and ADU development to the variance process that's already in place. Do not provide an overlay that upzones the entire city. That just doesn't make sense. You have a process for that, and it can be elegantly handled, and it involves every neighborhood. It will also keep relationships within those neighborhoods intact. Thirdly, I would encourage you to drop the overlay and drop down the approval process to the neighborhoods themselves. If you want to experiment on a social level, pick a neighborhood. Find a neighborhood that's very behind this, and in fact, then encourage it. But don't experiment over the entire city. Third, fourthly, recognize the importance of property ownership. This is crucial, or you will have blight in the city, and it will be something all of us will have to undo. Lastly, I do want to agree with the importance of an impact study. We live, we don't live in a greenfield society. I've done a lot of development where you do have kind of a chalkboard, and you can do whatever you want to do. We don't have that, that luxury here in Inglewood. So I think an impact study done by, to look at the technical aspects of the infrastructure and how those neighborhoods intersect is quite important. I commend you for your efforts. I appreciate the hard work you've put in, and I wish you best of luck in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Kelly McCloskey, and then Penny Beavers, please.
My name is Sandy Kettlehut. I live in District Two. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. This is a post from Facebook. City of Inglewood posted this today. After further investigation, it has been discovered that the damage to the 87-inch diameter stormwater pipeline beneath Oxford Avenue was more extensive than originally thought. The damaged segment of pipe extends beneath the adjacent retaining wall closer to the Oxford Station apartment buildings. This requires 108-inch diameter casing pipe to be bored beneath the retaining wall to protect the wall and building from damage during the repair. The previous 87-inch diameter corrugated metal pipe will be replaced with a stronger reinforced concrete pipe of the same diameter installed through the new casing pipe. Due to the large diameter of the casing pipe needed, a custom steel casing pipe must be fabricated to surround the new concrete pipe for added security, excuse me, structural integrity as it travels below the adjacent retaining wall. Manufacturing time for this custom pipe material, as well as the continuing rainstorms, have contributed to the delay of construction. The pipe is scheduled to be delivered the week of July 24th, and the repair work is currently estimated to be complete by mid-August. This repair project is very high priority, and the city and its contractor are working as quickly as possible to secure the necessary pipe materials and complete the repair and restore access to the roads. And I agree that we need to postpone all the ADU stuff, and we need to take care of the infrastructure and what's underneath the ground before we put more people on top of the ground. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kettlehut. Kelly McCloskey, and then Penny Beavers. I apologize for mistake there. I apologize for mistake there.
This is Mike Khan. Okay. Hi, my name is Kelly McCloskey. Cross streets is Radcliffe in Yladi. I'm here to talk about the density. What happens when density brings crime? Okay. I live at 4400 South Yladi Street. Within the last year, I've had three friends murdered in Englewood. One right here at the light rail station. Her name was Megan. My friend Bobby was murdered down at the Duck Pond. My next-door neighbor was brutally murdered on her doorstep. Darling grass. That's who I gave your wristbands for. If it wasn't for our neighborhood, I don't think the person that murdered my neighbor would have been caught because all of us have our Ring cams and were able to communicate with the cops what they seen. I don't know. The lady that died in the flood, I seen and heard how the people were affected last night at city council. Well, you know what? You lived through a murder next door to you and you see your neighbor laying on her front doorstep? Let me tell you, that will affect you for the rest of your life. Our neighborhood has come together to hold each other up. And what we are wanting to do now is bring more people in? I called the cops because I had a problem in my neighborhood. I had a problem. My neighbor just got robbed two times this last month. I had a problem. The cops said they couldn't do it because they only had four cops. It would take two away from Englewood to handle the problem that my son was dealing with. Okay, we don't have enough police officers, and we want to bring more people in? My husband was coming home from work. He couldn't go down Oxford. He had to go around, come down Broadway on Oxford. What was happening on that Broadway? We know why he couldn't come down Oxford. Well, what was happening is Cherokee. There was a standoff with the police on Cherokee Street. Delaware, I live right by Delaware. What happened there? We have bombs going. We have crime going on. And we want to grow our city when we got all these murders happening right in our community? Come on, you guys.
Thank you for your comments. Penny Beavers and then Rick Beavers, please. Both passed, okay. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you to Pamela Beats and then Kurt Supps, please.
Pamela Beats, Floyd in Delaware. Zone description of R2 District 16-4-1A. Quote, "The R2 districts provide living in mixed-density neighborhoods with a mix of houses and small-scale multi-unit building and includes some classifications of graduated, intensity reflected in a wider range of building types." End quote. What does that mean? I don't know, and I bet you don't either. It's vague and open-ended so that a developer could build most anything they want in our R2 neighborhoods. The environmental issues of destroying old growth trees and greenscape has not been considered in this proposal. High-density building has been linked to an increase in temperatures and increasing climate change. More examples of lack of knowledge, how this code is implemented and its effects. Why are R2 neighborhoods from the early 1900s to the 1950s not designated historic and protected from development? Answer: money, favoritism. I will not apologize for wanting the same quality of living that other cities, neighborhoods, and homeowners have. My home and my property only differs in size and wealth. Wealth being the deciding factor which neighborhoods are exempt or developed. Put your high-density development at the city center or the giant cement wasteland at Bellevue and Broadway. Leave our neighborhoods alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Supps and then Jan Wipert, please.
Can you hear me okay? Great. Do I need to give my name first or where I live or anything like that?
Name and identification across the street.
Kurt Supps, I live near University in Dartmouth. I am here tonight on behalf of the usual suspects and the angry little citizens of Englewood. At the end of the last meeting, as we were walking out of the, after the meeting was over, it appeared that a number of you hadn't even had a chance to read the entire, what is now over 600 pages of this document, fumbling around and trying to understand all the various aspects of it. I am concerned that we are here tonight, one week later, two weeks later, getting ready to vote on a document of this magnitude. I want to, I'm here tonight to support everybody that's speaking and because I want to make sure that you all do comprehend how significant we think this is. You are hearing tonight, like you did at the previous meeting, a multitude of concerns that cannot be ignored, all of which are germane to this issue. This cannot be looked at in a vacuum. Those of us who walked neighborhoods to get signatures for the referendum and the recall got an earful from citizens in this city who want nothing to do with Code Next. And yet, to talk to you and to talk to the city council sure doesn't seem that way. Code Next embodies significant irreparable generational implications. As such, if this commission votes to approve the Code Next, we will ensure that the citizens of the city of Englewood know exactly who is responsible for turning their neighborhoods over to greedy developers with no consideration to the inevitable environmental, traffic, and safety issues or the disastrous financial results that are going to affect all of us, one way or the other. I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Jan Wipert and Kim Dickerson. Or C. Ann Dickerson, I'm sorry.
My name is Jan Wipert. I'm off of Federal in Bellevue. Today, there was a water department truck on Irving in Bellevue doing some kind of repairs. It's another instance of looking at our infrastructure. Important. I'm going to reiterate what Kevin said. 1971 Sellers and Griggs Report warned of undersized pipes and overpopulating the city of Englewood. If you haven't read that, you're derelict in voting on this. It can be found, oh my gosh, at the Calibri Engineering Report that is online. Scroll to the bottom of it. You need to read it before you vote. Any changes to our planning and zoning as far as additional building should be put off until this, another infrastructure issues are addressed and repaired. Somebody else said this, too. How did, that's not right. I'm in two minutes. So I spoke with the fire engine and the fire department, and they did say, they look at density, and there's no way four adults and kids, say, two kids each can live. And let's say you put 12 upstairs, 12 downstairs, 24 people into 1,200 square foot, that would never be approved for any kind of foster home. Brenda Hubka, you should get off of this zone here, and you should not do this. Brenda Francis has nothing to do, has free speech, has nothing to do with our recall, except that she was hired to do our website. You are out of order in terms of being on this board.
Thank you for that information.
That's what I've got. Thank you.
I would like to request, please, that we concentrate on what we're actually talking about here tonight, which is Code Next and refrain from individual comments about individual commissioners or individuals in...
Code Next has to do with who's voting on it. And when they won't let other people speak about what's going on in the city, that has to do with a lot.
Thank you for your time.
And she is stopping free speech.
Next, we have C. Ann Dickerson, please, followed by Nikki Shoup.
C. Ann Dickerson, Englewood resident. This is contradictory. This draft is nothing but a word salad. It's no update. It's unconstitutional, full of typos and violations of other parts of code, so poorly crafted, it is unsalvageable. It is aimed to fundamentally change the R1 neighborhoods. It's just the upzoning proposed by the state, not even disguised, and it wipes out the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and substitute administrative adjustments multiple times. Unelected bureaucrats should not be given such unlimited power over our property rights. It is not your job to fundamentally change our property rights, especially not when nothing, not affordability nor attainability nor homelessness is gained by the unconstitutional control being presented. Misusing and redefining and misdefining affordability and attainability as equal is merely a smokescreen and will not accomplish any such thing, and it is not your job. Some problems indicative of a myriad, a myriad more problems on page 76, 12A and 12B are clear violations of state code and citizens' initiative in trying to eliminate cars and parking. Parking is a major problem now. Reducing cars, reducing and prohibiting cars and parking is ridiculous. It's not your job, and it violates the rights of all to their property. Reducing setbacks and minimum lot sizes and reducing lot coverage is ridiculous. Scrap the household definition. It clearly supports increased density and overcrowding. Even HUD says two heartbeats per minute. I mean, per bedroom. It's still not your job, and there is clear conflict of interest on that board, and some of you should not be voting on this.
Thank you for your time. Nikki Shoup and then Kim Wright, please.
Nikki Shoup, Lincoln and Tufts. I'm one of the few people here who are for this, and I just, I'm here to say that I've, just kind of at the top, that I feel like there are considerably more people who are for this than against this, but do not have time to come here. Because honestly, we are too busy. I had to rearrange my entire childcare schedule to get here tonight, and it's incredibly just daunting the task we have at hand in order to just support what I consider common sense changes to zoning. My husband and I, Mike, we started YMB Englewood, just to kind of bring awareness to Code Next and why it's a positive change to our community. And, I mean, frankly, it comes down to the fact that I should be allowed to do what I want on my property. If I want to build an ADU, I should be allowed to do that, and the city shouldn't stand in my way. I should be allowed to do that safely within regularly, regular guidelines, and that should be that. If we have a big enough lot, why can't we have two ADUs on that lot? Why waste all that brass instead of building places for people to live? Removing parking minimums, all that does, like reducing parking minimums, all that does is encourages people to use multimodal transit. And that's how we should get here. I rode my bike here today. I live a mile away. There's no reason I should have to drive here. So with these changes, these are all sensible solutions, and I hope that we continue to move forward and have this discussion and, you know, make Englewood a place where everyone can live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kim Wright and then Marcy Brown, please.
Kim Wright, District 4. I implored the P&amp;Z Commission to step back and go through all 670... Yeah. I implore the P&amp;Z Commission to step back and go through all 670-plus pages of this document, line by line, paragraph by paragraph, page by page, and then the commission needs to discuss it. This document has changed so much over the past couple of weeks and months, it's easy to lose what has and hasn't changed. It has grown over 100 pages in the last, 100 pages in the last two weeks. This legislation will surpass some of us in this room. Let's make sure we are leaving a positive legacy for our children and our children's children. Thank you all for the time and dedication you have put into this, not only the people on the dais, but the people behind me. We have all spent a lot of time and energy on this. We love our city. We need to make sure we get it right. When I say get it right, I mean get it right for the people who live here, not the developers who live out of state and often out of the country because they will benefit from the changes that are made on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Marcy Brown and then Kathy Notton, please.
It's Marcy Brown, District 1. I would appreciate if you would hold off on making your decision. These past months, while I've been walking, gathering signatures for recalls, let me tell you, we could never have gotten those signatures if people wanted this. All these ADUs and densifying the city. We don't need any more people here. We don't. Like Kelly was talking about, what's happened in the past, what, four months? We got pipe bombs, we've got shootouts. When we were walking, there was a SWAT team on a laddy. I mean, come on. We have to use common sense here. We don't need more people. And I would also ask you to realize about the parking problems and that we do need greenery. We do need canopy cover. We just can't put everything in cement. And how many of these ADUs are truly affordable? How many of them are really, come on, being used for grandmas or mother-in-laws? They're being used as Airbnbs. They're making a ton of money off of this. It's not, it's not sugar-coaked this at all. And also, I would like to say that I agree with Ms. Dickerson that some of you should not be on this panel because you have stopped people from free speech, and you have targeted people, Ms. Hubka, and that is not okay with us. So next time, you know...
I am not a lead on Next Door anymore.
Well, I don't care what you are. I really don't care. And so I would appreciate you holding your vote because the majority of the people who signed the recalls did not want more people here. So please take that into consideration.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brown, for your comments there, and we'll follow, final speaker will be Kathy Notton, please.
Chair, just as a reminder, we do have people online.
Oh, thank you very much, yes. I didn't recall that.
Kathy Notton, District 4. I too spent a couple months walking through the city and meeting so many residents. I think the thing that surprised me and impressed me greatly were the adorable darling houses in this city. One of the things that appealed to me when I moved here was that every other house wasn't the same floor plan. People built these houses individually. It's about aesthetics. And as I noticed, some of the new buildings that went up... they didn't fit in the neighborhood at all. We're giving developers carte blanche to go ahead and build whatever they want. The same thing would happen with ADUs. Doesn't fit. It's ugly. I think we need to take a note from a lot of countries that have maintained and kept their character. Look at Europe. It's charming. I'm very concerned to take a different tack from all my friends who have been speaking. I'm very concerned with the destruction of the aesthetics in this city. Please don't approve this code next.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to those online. Nancy, will you just be calling them out or do I need to?
So I'm going to call on each and see if they wish to speak. And then our IT support will bring them into the meeting. Ms. Subs, did you wish to provide testimony for the public hearing? I guess not. She muted. I have a Chandra. Do you wish to address the commission? If so, you need to unmute. Okay. Daniel, did you wish to address the commission? Give me a second. Okay, Mr. Shoup, Mike Shoup, did you wish to address the commission? Some, some folks may just be watching. Okay. And then I have someone who's just shows up as V. Did you wish to provide testimony? It looks like our online people are just participating to watch. Thank you all.
Again, thank you all for your input tonight. I really do, we all really do appreciate everything that's been said tonight. We understand this is a very important process. It's a very important document that we've been working on since 2020 to make sure that we tried to get it right. We hired an excellent consultant that was hired through a very open and competitive proposal to get the best team out here to be able to provide a document that's really going to help us move forward with our community. It's, it's our requirement as a planning zoning board to represent both the citizens, current citizens of Inglewood, as well as the future residents of the city. We cannot just sit and look at only what is going on right now. We need to consider what the needs of the future will be. And that, and that is the process that planning zoning is required to do. And again, um, you know, we're here because we want to be here to make this right. So with that, we'll close public comment. Thank you again, everyone who, who came out here. There's a lot of things that I think we're going to need to discuss. So I'll open it up for discussions internally within commissioners, please.
Just clarification. Are you closing the, for closing the public hearing, we need to have a motion. If you're wanting to hear from staff and ask questions.
We're not closing public hearing yet because I'm still, I'm sure we'll have questions with staff. And I apologize for that.
Just want to make sure we're following procedure.
Yeah, so now we'll have the discussion portion of the evening. All right, anybody want to start? Kate, oh yeah, Kate has a question.
Oh, sorry. I know, I was just clarifying. We're just doing questions of staff right now, not discussion yet. Just.
If we want to have any questions of staff, it has to be during the public hearing. I believe in order to close the public hearing, we'll, I guess then we actually do need a vote at that, at that point to close the public hearing. And then we would have a vote for, whether any changes, but we can, I, I think we need to have as much of discussions possible right now. I'm just going to put that out there is the way I understand it.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So my question is, when a project is proposed, what sort of checks are in place to ensure infrastructure and resources have the capacity to serve the proposed development, whether that be a single family residence or multifamily or even a commercial project?
And that was a question for staff. Think for Brian, yeah, if you can unmute.
Good evening. Sorry, I think there's some issue with my camera. Do I need to be sworn in?
We did that at the beginning of the meeting. We swore everyone in.
I, I apologize, I did not. Will you go ahead and swear me in?
I can swear you in, sure. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Thank you.
So as far as, um, infrastructure related needs, depending on the type of the project, they, they're reviewed on a case by case basis. So our utilities department would review the water and sewer utilities. And if there are different additional studies needed, they, they have that opportunity to request them. Our Public Works Department reviews items based on traffic and stormwater. Then those are reviewed on a project by project, even down to an accessory dwelling unit. The water and sewer utilities are not always reviewed for that all the way down to an accessory dwelling unit. They, they review, um, they review multifamily projects, new single family projects, but accessory dwelling units are generally considered something along the line of adding an additional toilet in a bathroom, something along those lines. So if there is an issue, if there becomes an issue with some utilities in a specific area, I think they would likely look at it at that time. Sorry, that's all I have.
That incident, okay, thank you. Kate, yes, please.
Just to follow up with that, that, those reviews would occur with like a zoning change, a plan unit development or something like that, as well as at the building permit process? So if you, whether you had a zoning change or just going to build regardless of zoning change?
They're, they're reviewed both, both. So if, if it requires a plan unit development, the, the utility and infrastructure is reviewed then. If they needed additional studies, it's reviewed then. If they only need to obtain a building permit, meaning their, their entitlements are already there, meaning the zoning is in place, then it would be reviewed with the building permit.
Go ahead.
And for a building permit, is the fire department reviewing agency on those? And do they do regular inspections on new projects?
Sorry, what was the second part of the question? I got the first part.
I guess, do they inspect the project prior to issuance of CO?
I know that they, they are part of the review process. The Fire Marshal's Department, the Fire Marshal Office, the Building Division, the Planning Division, Engineering for Traffic and Stormwater Utilities. Brad, you may have more additional information on whether or not they are part of the inspection process.
And maybe just to, to build on that, we have current master plans for stormwater, sanitary sewer, as well as water distribution. Is that correct?
I don't have an answer for that question right now.
Okay, I'm almost hundred percent positive we've got those because I've, I've seen them. But we can go on to other questions and that are wanting to get discussed. Go ahead, Brenda.
Sure. In regards to occupancy limitations, is this from the International Building Code? And that it will not change from the, from the existing today? And then to, if we were past this zoning ordinance?
Are you asking about the two page supplement that was included based on your questions?
I sure am. Section four oh four, occupancy limitations, that dwelling unit shall not be occupied by more occupants than permitted by the minimum area. And then we have a table. It looks, go ahead.
That information is from the Property Maintenance Code that was submitted to us by the, the building official.
And it will remain the same, right?
Um, I'm not sure how often property maintenance codes are revised. I know our building code is generally changed. We adopt a new building code generally every three years.
Right, it says at the bottom here, the twenty twenty one International Property Maintenance Code. And that's an international code accepted, you know, the building department either decides to adhere to that code. And then that international code then is updated outside of the, of the city, right? Just trying to explain this to everyone.
I don't know how often it, it, the international version is done. I know the building codes are done generally every three years. They're kind of on a three year rotation. And then the city generally adopts a new version every three years with their own local amendment.
Right, so the, the minimum area requirements for six or more occupants is a hundred and fifty square feet. Does that look correct to you on this table? In other words, if six or more, six or more people want to occupy a home, what is that, six times one fifty, right? That's the square footage that they would need to remain in the home, regardless of the household definition?
I believe that's correct, yes, ma'am.
Good, Michelle. Sorry, real quick, Brenda, was that the information you need?
Well, I think that answers my question. I'll just say that looking at the table, then we have the definition of household provided by the other cities. It looks like our data is five, Aurora is four, Brighton is up to four, individuals are more not related. I think Denver's five, but we're not surprised by Denver. Because I had looked at this table, yeah, Denver is five. I think, um, unincorporated Arapahoe County is, I, when I looked it up on the web was four. Does that sound right to you?
And I think where you're going with this is we're appearing to be coming more in line with those. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it sounds like that if we change our household definition to four non-related people that we're, um, we're just falling in line with what looks to be most of the, the, the city surrounding us. Sheridan is five. Westminster is four, right? I just, I didn't see Arapahoe County.
Where we vary for, with, where we vary except for with Denver is that we also include plus children or legal dependents. But to your point, it's backstopped by the maintenance code.
Right, so if you wanted twenty people to live in a house altogether, if I did the math, you would have to have a minimum square footage of two thousand one hundred and fifty square feet, right? If, for twenty people. Scotty, more than that. I guess I need my calculator, right? So a hundred and fifty square feet times twenty. All right, three thousand, thank you. I'm in planning and zoning now.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and that doesn't change with the next code, right?
Chris, could you confirm that?
Yeah, that's a separate code and it's not part of this amendment.
Thank you. Kate?
I just, I guess this is a question, I believe we're able to answer it. I think it's, my question is more so in terms of habitability and occupancy limits, this code does not cover that, the land use code that goes to the building code, regardless of what the calculations are. Because I would be hesitant to look at this and give exact number of what a calculation is or ask someone to do that on the fly. But just to reiterate again, we do have a building code that covers habitability and sizing requirements for health and safety. Can someone just confirm that?
Chris, look, if you were, you had a thought there.
Yes, that's accurate.
Thank you. Michelle, you have something?
Can I go back to asking some questions of staff?
Yeah, that's why we left that open. Yeah, well, we're asking and discussing. We want to get everything out as possible before we start.
Easy ones.
All right.
That's what I was trying to get at. Okay. In six, sixteen dash one dash eight G talks about non-conforming signs and that this is on commercial properties. And that they must be fixed, the way it's written, it's they must be fixed within, if it's unoccupied for greater than ninety days. Actually, I've been a property, commercial property manager for many, many years. And I do have had over the years, some tenants, for instance, an H and R block or something like that, that will shut down for all but three months of the year and actually move everything out and then bring everything back in again. And I just wanted to know if that could be addressed in this, a little change in there to allow for that.
Yeah, it, it is referring specifically to non-conforming signs, the signs that don't comply with the ordinance. And so that's, the ordinance is trying to, to eliminate those over time. So it, it can be addressed in any way you would choose to, to extend that limit or shorten that limit. I don't know, I can look up quickly what the current limit is. We usually don't make significant changes in the non-conforming sign section. So we're usually rolling over your current one. I would say that's a fairly typical number. Again, because it's not saying that you have to change out your sign if it's conforming. It's one that was not meeting the ordinance now that would have to be eliminated.
Right, but I guess what I'm getting is that that business might have a non-conforming sign. Anyway, just, just, that's a very small thing to, to bring up. And I think probably everybody up here on the dais would think it's probably okay too. But I don't want to speak for anybody. Then on sixteen dash two, this might be more of a question for staff. It's taught, it talks about the requirements for notification of citizens when there's a PUD or some sort of hearing coming up. And it's, it says, I think it's current code, we just passed it on forward, that it's, you have to notify the houses within one thousand feet of the property. And in general, how many properties is that? How many people do we end up notifying? Do we know, have a, have an idea? I'm calling on staff, thank you though.
No, I, I don't know right off the top of my head. I can try to look something up. But no, I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I guess what my point is getting at is that I hear, heard many people talking about, oh, they just broke ground on a blah, blah, blah down the street. I didn't even know, I mean, citizens have a, have an obligation to look for, you know, zoning signs and things like that. But I was just curious if there was any exploration on making more people know, expanding that notification parameter.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
There, there was not any discussion. I believe there was not any discussion on changing that diameter or that notification area.
Okay, thank you.
I believe our blocks are about five hundred feet. So.
Depends on seventy five versus.
It does, but generally speaking, so I think somewhere around a two block radius, I believe is the intent for that.
I was thinking it was around forty, but I just.
You know?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on the owner occupancy and number of occupants and ask staff, prior to the draft in front of us of code next, were those requirements in the Unified Development Code previously? Before consensus by council to have them removed?
Which ritual requirement are you speaking of specifically? I think you mentioned two different ones.
So owner occupancy and then a number of occupants allowed.
Owner occupancy of the ADU or just owner occupancy?
General, like on a lot.
Okay.
There was not, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there was not an owner occupancy requirement in general. So for a single family home needing to be owner occupied, um, I believe included in the draft, there was a provision that required owner occupancy if you were building an ADU, which had ultimately been requested to be removed at a council study session. And then the provisions around the number of unrelated adults per household was originally two in the draft. It was brought forward from the original code. And then that was requested to be changed at a city council study session as well.
Okay, thank you. Another question of staff, has council moved forward with setting up the task force to study affordability?
study affordability, attainability of housing in Inglewood? Um, and what does the timeline look like for that?
I can answer that. Good evening, Brad Power, Director of Community Development. Uh, council's still recruiting, uh, folks to apply for that task force. So, uh, my understanding is interviews with interested people would be taking place toward the end of August. And probably a, an appointment period in September. So I would think that that group would probably be up to speed sometime in the fall.
Okay, um. So I would like the commissioners to consider as we look at a potential vote tonight um, and send recommendations to council that we consider the idea of adding back in some language around sunsetting the owner occupancy requirements into the code or put it there if it wasn't before. Um, to allow some time for the newly formed task force to study for a year or two. Um, the surrounding cities, some of the information that was provided to us for tonight. Uh, the AARP report that was provided to us. Um, and give us some feedback. I, I'm specifically concerned with, while I am deeply appreciative of all of the voices that came out tonight for and against these updates. Um, I do feel like there's a lack of representation from marginalized groups that may live within our city limits, and I would like to have some focus group action via the task force to really engage those voices and bring it into the conversation before decisions are made. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Camille?
Um, first of all, I, I do want to echo that. Um, I think the owner occupancy is something that we could look at some more, especially because I think, um, especially with ADUs, which are an opportunity for, um, you know, wealth within the city for those property owners that want to use them to, um, supplement income or provide an income. Um, it also kind of creates community with the folks that live on the lot, um, rather than having a absent owner. Um, I think that's a lot. I think it's important, but my question is about, uh, the courtyard lot. Um, so with the courtyard lot, I was wondering, um, it talks about a a lot size, so I've seen that's a lot size for each unit on that lot. Um, so you take a group of lots or a larger lot and subdivide it into those smaller lot sizes. I was wondering about the, um, actual courtyard or common area space itself. Is that something that would be, um, like attractive that subdivision or would it be a common ownership easement or something?
It, it could be one of two things. The project could be owned as a whole. Um, and, and it goes with all of the lots, or it could be platted as common area maintained by all of the individuals. So to file for that through the plat, it, the, uh, project would have to meet one of those two requirements.
Okay, so another question on that courtyard lot, uh, is I was wondering if, um, parking requirements had been modeled for that configuration and then, um, I, I didn't see anything in the code talking about tandem parking, if that's allowed or not.
Yeah, um, the parking would be required for each individual unit, just as it would in a, a single family project, because they are essentially platted lots. So each lot would have to meet its own parking requirement. Um, whether one lot could have two spots that are tandem. Um, typically the layout doesn't work that way. Um, the lots, the parking area is usually towards the back in a remote portion of the lot. Um, for alley loaded lots especially, it's very easy to just have them pull off that portion of the, of project. So, um, some, it's often beneficial for them to be more shared, so a tandem wouldn't work in that situation. But if each individual unit had its, had its own parking on that lot, rather than the project as a whole. Um, I suppose tandem could work for one of the units, just like it can in a detached, single family house.
Thank you for that. I guess, um, something that that kind of got me thinking about, because I actually really like the configuration. I think it kind of creates a little bit of a, a village model. Um, but I think that the parking might be a little bit hard, um, because I don't think that that configuration is designed to have, um, you know, drives going through the lot, so it really seems like it would be restricted to the back. And, um, I know this probably wouldn't be popular, but, um, I was wondering if there's ever any discussion about decreasing the parking requirements for that sort of configuration, especially if it might be near, um, public transportation or, or anything like that.
Yeah, um, there wasn't specific conversations on decreasing parking for that particular type of project and pattern. Um, and throughout all the steering committee discussions, it was just assumed that they would have a similar parking impact as a house, and so they should meet that requirement. Um, the bigger question of where parking reductions could be done, um, most of that was addressed through root policies, analysis, um, review of affordable housing options. And so there is a parking reduction. Um, most of that was looked at for, um, multi-unit buildings. Um, but it, it, you know, that's a placeholder in the code that's subject to the task force review. So I suppose it's possible that those projects could also, um, prove through their development that they're going to reduce parking, um, in exchange for the, the contractual obligation of providing a certain number of um, affordable units, just like a multi-unit project could. Um, so it's essentially an unbundled multi-unit project and, and um, depending on where the affordability benefits shake out, they might be eligible for the same parking reduction that the affordable units are.
Then I also want to say, I think there's a couple of examples of at least that type of thing off, uh, Downing and Clarkson, and I, I, I think they're kind of cool, although I, I wish those were open spaces. Some of them have signs saying you cannot be in here, so that's the whole other side thing. Um, uh, other specific questions, comments, or I think there's a couple of things that we definitely want to discuss i- in more detail. Um, but I'm happy to kind of get these questions out of the way. Aaron, you want to go? Yeah, go ahead, Kate.
Okay, um, back to the, um, the discussion on, um, how many people are in a household. At one point in time, I dug up on the draft, um, Code Next. Um, it, there was this, it was a comment on the side, so it was probably made by Chris, you, or somebody on staff. And it was talking about how many people, and it said, um, oh, wrong one. It was, but it said, basically, oh, here it is right here. It basically said, discuss with staff on tracking enforcement, this is talking again about the definition of a household. Typical in the region is plus three or plus four related to group home. Which brought, forced the question to me that if council changed it from two people in ADU or wherever, a household is two people, changed it from two to four, and also included everything that comes with it, kids and all that sort of stuff. Um, I think there's quite a bit of pushback on that, and there's pushback from me on that as well. Um, and maybe the, going up to the four adults needs to be in a different part that talks about group homes and not single family. Would that be something that could be considered?
Uh, I think the, the note you're referring to, there's a, a statutory provision of you, cities can't discriminate against group homes for
Right.
certain classes of people, and so that's what that note is referring to. To make sure that the definition of household accounts for that correspond, that corresponding issue as well. And so in the, in the current code, that's handled as a specific use that's allowed in anywhere a detached house is allowed. Um, it's defined as a building type and use. A lot of times codes will just define household to include that statutory definition as well. And so that's what that note was referring to.
Yep.
So I think what we're left with is, um, the number that we're, we were directed just to make a simple change to the current number. Um, that was more in line with some of the others. Um, so that could be changed to
Okay.
whatever the city desires.
Okay, so if we, if we, if, if the limit on the definition of a household, that wouldn't have any impact on a group home, because there are several households basically living dorm style, sort of, in a home.
The group home requirement that, that the city has to account for by statute is handled elsewhere than that definition, correct?
Okay, good. Uh, and then I, I did go through this whole.
Can I ask a question on the group home side? Cause I, I did note that that is actually a permitted use for all there are ones. And that's continuation, is that a continuation from what we'd had before? Is that basically referring to what you were saying of not being able to? Um, uh, is that a continuation of the previous?
Yes, that's continuation of the current.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Go ahead.
Yeah, and then just, I don't want to get into discussion, but I did want to, since Brenda brought it up. And I think Chris did, or maybe it was Brian that brought it up. But this table of other municipalities and their, how many people they, uh, have as a maximum in their household. And I will tell you that there, out of all of them, there is only, there are only two of them that allow four or five plus kids. The rest have a limit, if they say five, that is the hard limit. It doesn't mean you get, you know, foster kids and kids and all that sort of stuff in there. So there is a difference in what we are, what it, what this document says, which would be four plus everything else, um, which would be substantially more than what, what is referred, what is common in all of these municipalities.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, go ahead, Kate.
Also on the lines for the household size, um, do we currently have any sort of variance process or administrative process if someone wants to exceed what we have right now in terms of household or occupancy, as long as it's within the building code?
No, we do not. Not that I'm aware of, unless there's a separate process through code enforcement. But we have not, um, been asked that question in the Planning and Zoning Department.
One additional one. Um, I don't know if, if council requested this, has there been any data collected on, like, the number of complaints, violations of a household size, or any action taken on that within the city?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but again, that would likely come through the code, code enforcement, may come through the code enforcement department. That, that if they have, and I'm not aware of it, I don't know if that, if they have. Um, but again, through the Planning and Zoning Department, no.
I'd just like to offer that, um, this is one of those zoning laws that in the history of our country has been used to discriminate against people of various backgrounds. Um, the definition of a family, as some municipalities still define this as family. Um, to just be mindful that that's how this has been used in the past. And, um, I just encourage, um, or I would advise that this is the, the zoning and development code is probably not the place to define and restrict that. Rather, um, building code, maintenance code, houses are all different sizes, they're used in all different ways. So, um, making, drawing clear lines here might work against those who are, um, have been faced with inequity in the past.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to respond to that, and it's a very fair point, Aaron. Um, and once again, I think I'm going to go back to something that you said a long time ago, Chris, is that we can tailor things for different, um, zoning areas and things like that. And maybe this has become such a flashpoint because of the ADUs. Um, and so maybe we need to take a look at changing things, the making a limit on how many people can be in an ADU versus a, a regular, you know, single family dwelling. Maybe that's a way to sort of ease this, because I think, uh, it, it has become a flashpoint, potentially three ADUs in your backyard, and each one of them can have four adults and all that stuff. So, um, just a suggestion on how we can move forward on that.
So I, I, I think this is one of those items that I, I wanted to make sure we were having everybody's opinion on, on, on household, I think, um, as well as owner occupancy of, of AD, of houses with ADUs. So unless anybody has additional questions, maybe we can have a little further deep dive into the household and, and see what we want to move forward with, what we might want to change or anything like that. Uh, does that sound good to everyone?
Are you closing the public hearing then?
No.
If you're entering into discussion?
Do I have to close public hearing that entered? So I can't ask another question?
Ms. McDermott?
Uh, thanks, Ms. Fenton. Um, yeah, if you're going to be going into, uh, debate and discussion about, um, the issue presented. Um, then yeah, you would need to, you should be moving to close public comment, or the public hearing, excuse me.
And to clarify, which means we cannot ask any more questions of staff at that time.
At that, unless it's a, just a clarification about certain wording. Um, but at that point, no additional evidence can be received by the commission.
Okay, well, then I will hold off again to make sure that we've covered the other items. Cause I, I, I think there's a couple of things that we really want to make sure we're talking through and getting in, and I, I appreciate, then one of all the rules that, that need to be established. Um, I just also want to make sure that we can ask questions of, of staff and our consultant, um, as needed. So, uh, maybe any other clarifications for households, um, from staff? If not, uh, maybe I'll ask about clarifications and other items. Go ahead, Tina.
I have one more item, just to build on what Kate was asking and what Erin stated about, um, discriminatory practices. I think I'd just like to ask staff additionally if there have been any studies or look at intergenerational use of lots within our city and, um, you know, families supporting one another through living with grandparents and multiple generations within their families. And looking at that against some of the demographics of, you know, from the census of who has moved into Inglewood and might have that need. Um, and that being a part of what our recommendation would be, um, to have the task force look into eventually.
No, not through our department, no ma'am. At least not in my tenure.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, other questions, uh, specific items that we would like to ask of, of staff or, um, our consultant before we close the public hearing and have further discussions? Go ahead, Camille.
I have a really small, um, just something that I noticed in the notification. Come back.
Go ahead, Kate, yeah, it gives me a little time, there you go.
I'm so sorry about that. Okay, oh. Um, so it's under procedures, um, E. Or, sorry, F3, um, for the posted procedures, this is really, really minor. Um, on the published and the mailed, it, uh, states how many days prior to the hearing that those should be posted. But in the posted, it has that number um, sort of buried in the, it's three C. Um, so I was just wondering if there's a reason why, and it might just, for, um, quick glance, number of days ahead of time to post notice, to put it in that heading. Sorry, it's page.
Studies.
Three dash.
Yeah, two dash five.
And what was the section?
So it's two dash five, F1, three. And I'm looking at, um, for two, under the published notice, it says the, um, published notice is required 15 days prior to a public hearing and then mailed, um, 15 days prior to the public hearing. And for posted, it doesn't have a date under three, it's three C. So it's just buried a little bit. I was, it's just a organizational note.
So a request that gets brought up into the section three, um, the three C basically to match both two and four.
Correct.
That makes sense, Chris.
I guess especially because it is a different number, so having that be obvious might be helpful.
Okay, we, um, do you want to say it again, or do you want me to go?
Uh, so I was just noting that under the public notice section on page two dash five, uh, section F3, um, where it has the posted notification requirements. Um, I was wanting the days prior to the public hearing that a site is required to be posted to be in the posted heading, rather than a subsection underneath number three, so right now it's subsection C under F3.
And to further, uh, that to match really what's required in both sections two and four.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Okay, yeah, you go, okay, good. Okay, um, that, we, we've had a lot of questions, we've, we've gone through a lot of things. Uh, is everybody ready to start the discussion? And so, um, you get a motion to. Is everybody ready to start the discussion, and so you get a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close public com, or, yeah, public hearing.
You have a second?
I will second that.
We can vote?
Ready to vote? Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Prang?
Yes.
Ms. Keys?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can start discussion.
You need a motion on the floor first to do discussion.
We would like a motion to start discussion, thank you.
So moved.
I will second that. Sorry, it's.
Speak out the motion.
Motion to recommend approval to City Council?
No, to begin discussion, is that what you?
Vicky, can you weigh in?
Yes, again, so I'm still checking what we are doing. So yes, after the close of the public hearing, it would just be a discussion, and then from the discussion, the motion, if it would.
We don't need an action to start discussion.
Right, that's correct, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I thought you had to have a motion first to discuss.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Brenda, do you have something?
Oh, if we want to make a change to this, we make a motion to amend?
Yeah, so I think the, let me go through what I understand is the process, and maybe Vicky and Nancy, if you can make sure. We're going to have discussion now to, I think, at least on three items that I know of, that I've noted. Both the owner occupancy of ADUs, the definition of a household, and Carl had asked last week for solar access to be modified. So I think I'd like to have discussion on at least those three items. And if others have more items that they'd like to discuss, we can add that. At that time, we will put a motion forward to either move forward with the UDC as is, move forward to have it with any specific amendments that we'd like to request based on these discussions, or move forward to reject the development code as written and go back to reviewing it again. So right now, we're discussing, I think, the, the items that are important to us, that we would like to. I think today we need to vote one way, we don't have to. I would like, I, I think it's our responsibility to keep moving forward. If we really think we need to postpone, and that's the, the vote, then I think we need to vote to not move forward with it and, and try it again. But let's see where we, where we get. So with that, I can start discussions, unless anyone else would like to? All right, so the definition of the household was changed to, from two to four. Not individuals, but different family units. So there was a lot of reasons why, partially that, that was what was requested of our consultant. I think there's some advantages, some disadvantages, Erin noted some things that I hadn't thought of also. I think we're trying to become more in line with some of our neighboring communities. I'm in, in support, because I think it's a bit of a self-regulating issue. I don't think people are going to end up jamming more people than they really want to have together. I mean, if they want to live with, with a bunch of different people, I'm not one to say that you can't do that. So I'm not sure where other people's thoughts are on that, I feel like that's a bit of a self-regulation, but, yeah.
Well, let me speak to this, I think there's a lot of concern about places you may live that have, that are a problem renter, so to speak. I think that's where some of the concern comes from. And I don't, I think a better way to handle overcrowding or a problem property next to you is through legislation. For instance, if there is a problem with the property and there's a lot of calls out and they are breaking an ordinance, then code follows up with, of course, leaving a note there, and that renter can toss it out, they don't know. They don't know who the management company is, but they will eventually find the owner through the accessory records. And sometimes that's, that's quite a ways off, you know, that can be months down the road. Also, a lot of people testified that it's these investment companies that buy up the rental properties, and that's true. But there are also a lot of retirees, people who lived in these houses for years and years, and then left out of state, or their children inherited the properties. And they've left it now to a management company, a third-party management company. And a lot of times, they won't be aware if there's this problem. What I think our city council should do is instead is ask our renters, I mean, our rent, our property owners, if they're going to rent it out, to just register with the city. Now, it doesn't mean that they have to pass any legislation about what they do with the house, but if they had a phone and an email address, it would be a lot easier for community development to send an email and say, you know, we've had a lot of noise ordinances here, or because honestly, my uncle lives in a basement apartment and the weeds got higher than my head, so. And also, the guy upstairs is probably smoking something he shouldn't be. They did leave a note with the guy, and I decided to try to get ahold of the property owner. And it took me a while of Google searching around, but I found it's an 83-year-old lady in Maryland. And I'll bet you anything, and she's had the house since the 50s. I don't think that she knows what's going on at the property, because we don't ask for that information. So that's why I don't think household size is the best way to try to regulate some of the things that happen to these property, because otherwise, what's code enforcement going to do? Check for DNA and, and marriage licenses? I don't think that's where that needs to fall. So that's why I think that the new code with the, as written, is something I will vote for.
Thank you, Brenda.
For context, I am the youngest of 10, so I grew up in a single-family house with a lot of people in it. Whether we got along or not is a whole nother story. And we had other people living with us as well that were not members of our family that we brought in. So I'm aware of living with many people under one roof. And I appreciate the expansion of the definition of household in this code update. I think what we've had is far too restrictive. And I think we need to be able to think about households look different now, and they look different to, to everybody. Many people would say, oh my gosh, why would you have 10 children? So I think that's something that we want to take into account and understand too, that there's other policy tools, like Brenda just mentioned, that can really get at code enforcement and really what are the issues happening on the property, more so than who's related to who and how many people are there. One point I would like to bring up as an idea is for the ADUs. And we talk about how they are accessory to the primary structure on a, on a lot. And would that be something we'd want to consider? Is if it's accessory or smaller than, then should the household size for an ADU as a dwelling unit be smaller than our other definition of household per dwelling unit? In Denver, they limit it to 200 square feet per person in an ADU. So typically, that would be at a max four or five people, you know, and I think if we have 800 square feet in an ADU, that would be a max of four people in an ADU. So that's one thing to consider, there may, that may not pan out super well in Denver because of them changing the, the household size definition. But just something to consider in terms of some form of, of limitation, just for the, the ADU.
Thank you, other thoughts, discussions on it?
I think that the size limitation of the ADU itself, being limited to a maximum of 800 square feet, will also sort of naturally limit how many folks live there. While in some cases, you know, you can fit a two-bedroom into 800 square feet, two-bed, one-bath. I don't think in every instance, that's going to mean that all of those ADUs are maximized with occupancy. So I think that's something to consider. Generally, I don't think that they're going to be occupied with the maximum occupancy allowed in a household.
Other, Michelle?
Well, I'd like to, I agree with you, Colin, 100% that I, I don't have any interest in telling people how to live or who's in their family or who's not in their family. I don't care, that's your business. But I do think what's important is that we keep in mind that the neighborhood. I mean, I don't think it's a matter of who's living in the household and anything about that, it's about the number of people and the noise and the, you know, the lights going on and off and all that sort of stuff, all those additional people, that's what it's about. And to, first of all, I don't think ADUs belong in the R1 districts, in any of them, even though I know we have them in the R1Cs already. But what you're doing in the R1 district by saying you can have an, an ADU, that's a one-lot, one-house zoning. And that zoning is a covenant between the city and the, and the citizens. And it says, city, I will, the city says to the, to the, to the owner, we're going to make sure that everybody around you falls into the rules that we have for you. And as the owner of the property, you're relying on the city to do that. Well, what we're talking about by putting ADUs in the R1 district, you're doubling the density. I mean, seriously, you're taking one house, one piece of property, and you're putting an ADU on it. And in another instance, you're taking it on a corner lot, and you divide it into two different houses. I, I just really think that we need to be very careful, that's a very big responsibility and covenant between homeowners or any property owner and a municipality. And it deserves the utmost care in, in talking about it. So I, I don't think that ADUs belong in any of the R1 districts, for, for starters. And I definitely don't think that there should be any more than one on a lot. That's just, especially if you're going to take out the, the residency requirement, you're going to have up to four people with all, everything that comes with that. And it's, it's just, it's just, you're asking for developers to come in, buy houses, put three ADUs back there, rent them out as short-term rentals, and too bad about the rest of the neighborhood, you have to live with it. So I, I feel very strongly about, about this, as you can tell, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tina.
I agree, Michelle, it is a great responsibility for us as, as homeowners and city responsibilities and time and resources. I don't mind the idea of ADUs being allowed in R1 districts, but I do agree with your sentiment on one. And, and I say that because on my property, I sit on a double lot with a really deep backyard. So my house is, you know, pretty close to the front of the property, and I have a ton of space in back that could easily encompass an ADU safely, hopefully with parking off of the alleyway. So I do think that's something that we should keep in consideration, the allowance of one, if, if the lot size is large enough.
Good, Kate?
Just had a, I guess, I don't know if it's a point of order or not, but is it possible for us to stick to one topic and try to talk through it, like the household size? And, and just see if we can get to a point on that and then switch to the ADU discussion?
I, I had the same thing, they are very well intertwined, so I think we're probably going to end up going down that line, but I, I agree with you. We should try to stick to the household definition at this point and hash that through. And then from there, we can talk about the ADUs and ownership and allowances in different places. Thank you, Michelle. Erin?
And I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, which, which topic are we?
Household. Household definition, yeah.
Like I said before, I'm very, you know, I, I, I'm very cautious about using the development code to define how people live together. Especially because, you know, this code hasn't been updated in 20 years. Our society is continuing to evolve in how we live, how we deal with the housing crisis and affordability crisis. And so I believe we need to make flexibility for, you know, for our residents to, to be able to, to live as they, as they see fit and as they can. That being said, I do hear the fear and the the concern that a lot of residents have shared about, well, this could be 20 people in a single-family home next door. So that doesn't, that doesn't go unheard. I'm typically against trying to over-regulate and try to come up with some very, you know, sophisticated way to codify that. But I wouldn't, if there's some way to, you know, five unrelated people, great, but then some sort of additional backstop, not all five can have four kids each, you know, in that same house. So some total maximum. Yes, the, the, the maintenance code provides some guidance, but, I mean, it's the maintenance code. So, yeah, I'd be an advocate, advocate for some balance, not quite to what Denver has done with a total, you know, without limit. But certainly, I, I think there should be some, some flexibility. My two cents.
Thank you, Erin. Michelle?
I would agree with you, and so I would say that maybe what we could do is, you know, that the, the four, it doesn't have to be four unrelated adults, it could be four unrelated people, really. And that would actually make it even more open to other people. But, but all of those other cities in that chart that Brian sent to us in this packet, they all have maximums, and there's only two cities, one of them, I think, is, I don't know, Beverly Hills or something, like you can have unlimited people in whatever unit or something, I'm like, stay in California. But, but they are, they have hard numbers, they have like two, on that chart, it's, there's only two places, like I said, Beverly Hills and one other place that says four and everything that might come with that, so, so I agree.
And my other side of that is also, there are, I mean, I know Inglewood is full of very charming, smaller houses, but there are some large, rambling, six-bedroom ranch homes in the city that, that limit wouldn't, wouldn't be a great fit for.
Well, and I live in an R1 house, and I don't have an alley. I've got a large backyard, there's an easement back there, of course, for the utilities and things. But that also brings up a different point, is that most people in Inglewood have an alley. So there is a, actually a, sort of a, a barrier between the backyards. That's not the case at my house, there's five backyards connected to me. And you start putting ADUs in those, that's, 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 that's not what I bought the house for. I bought it to have a house on a lot.
Thank you, Michelle. And I, I think that is, you're right on, on that lot, to have that house on that lot. And I think that's what we all have to remember here, is we have a responsibility to allow people to do what they want to do within reason. I'm not saying that you can tear down and put in a multifamily skyscraper on, on our one lot, but I think you're not separating out a lot, you are keeping, it's still one lot, it has another building on it that someone can rent out. Now we're going into ADU, so same with the household side, I'm, I would, in this particular instance, not, I, I would prefer to err in the allowing of more people for different opportunities and different reasons than to restrict it, that becomes a nuisance or overbearing for our, our government to have to regulate to, because people want to live together. That, that's where I, I'm leaning for.
Well, I said I agree, just, just limit it to four, four people, that's all.
But why, why, why does it have to be limited to four people?
Well, why did it have to go to four people from two people?
Well, right.
You know, we can.
I know, I hear what you're saying, but I think.
But I think that, you know, having the, there's nobody on that chart that allows, except for Beverly Hills and somebody else's place else, that a house allows four people, all their kids, all their grandkids, all their, you know, everything else with it. I think you should just limit it to four people in, in those, in those situations.
So you're saying a house with six bedrooms couldn't have five unrelated people living in there?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking more about when you're talking in terms of the household size. So anyway.
That, but that goes to that, that would be the same, they would be out of, if, in that situation, they would be out of compliance with, with law, if you said that you could not.
The definition includes family, all that sort of stuff, and it says or four unrelated adults and all their family that comes along with it. I'm saying, fine, just cross off all those four adults and all the things that come along with it, that's what I'm saying.
What I'm asking is.
But you can have as many as the household in the, I'm not changing the definition at all, it's just cutting off that extra line that says all those people.
Okay, I, I'm seeing it a little differently than, than you are, and I think we can continue to have that discussion, go ahead, Brenda.
No, I was looking at the chart and stuff like that, and I don't think that's like we need to deep dive into what other cities do. I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I don't think we need to deep dive into what other cities do.
Okay.
Maybe, let's see, was, did anybody want to forward a motion on changing it, and we can move on?
I, I think I, I, we're not going to do motions yet, I, I think we need to discuss all the points and then come up with the amendments at that point, and then we'll be able to discuss putting a motion. and then we'll be able to discuss putting a motion forward for that.
Let me try to make it more clear.
Yeah, thank you.
The old definition of a household was, "A household includes one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or legal guardianship, including foster children, together in a dwelling unit," and then, semicolon, "or two unrelated persons and their children living together in a dwelling unit." The new definition says, "A household includes one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, civil union, or committed partnership, or legal guardianship, including foster children, living together in a dwelling unit," semicolon, "or up to four unrelated adults and their children, or legal dependents, living together in a dwelling unit." I'm just saying is that it's all good, and just, if, just to, so cross off this four unrelated adults and say four unrelated people, and put a period there. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm proposing, instead of what you're saying.
So I guess I kind of have a question, or I guess two things that it sounds like we've talked about a little bit that I don't know if we want to talk about more, which would be if if the code should implement a maximum occupancy of people per lot. So that would be adults, kids, everyone. Or a difference in the number of occupants in a primary residence versus an accessory dwelling unit? I don't know if we want to talk about either of those options.
Which again, kind of gets into that next step. Before we get there, Tina, did you have a thought on?
I did. So wanting to follow up on the discussion between you and Michelle, I see both of your points. I agree with Michelle that we should have limits. However, I agree with you, Colin, that the square footage of the house of the primary residence should be taken into consideration. So perhaps there's two different limits, you know, depending on, you know, if it's under this square footage, it's one limit, and if it's above, it's another limit. And then, of course, I also agree that having very clear limitations on ADUs and how many occupants are allowed is advisable. If I am not prepared for a yes vote to move this draft of code next forward without some sort of semblance of language in the code referring to limits until that task force can be formed by the city council and do some studying of this issue.
Can you repeat that last part, because picture understood?
I just want to make sure that the definition of household and number of occupants is studied by the task force. And so I would like to see some sort of inclusion of language around limits or bringing a sunset clause language back into the code as a placeholder until the task force can be formed and study some of the questions that Kate brought up, that Erin brought up, and that we, you know, have more information to make a better decision on that.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Other thoughts? Carl?
I think the square foot limit is one way, one judgment thing to go by. It should be, like bathrooms should be, you can't have 20 people with one bathroom, and then.
It's college.
And a dormitory. And parking should be an issue too. It should be looked at. You can't have 20 cars for a 50-foot lot. You have people, they'll be parking on the lawn or anywhere they can find a spot. So that needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Carl. Go ahead.
I just, I think just ending it at four unrelated adults is too restrictive. But certainly, I think somewhere less than, you know, what has been discussed, of, you know, possibly 20, you know. Again, thinking for, I mean, we all know how we have lived and we have grown up, but, you know, there are things that are changing. The definitions of families are changing, how people live, and where they live is changing. So I'd just like to take into account some of those options without being unreasonable in a single-family zone. So some sort of backstop above just four, period, maybe it's four unrelated people with a maximum of bedrooms times two, or bedrooms plus four. I don't know, something like, I don't, I'm not an expert in that. But I think we can allow a little more flexibility, also knowing that development code is not the ideal place to regulate this.
That, I think I could actually be behind foreign-related plus bedroom, or up two bedrooms times two. Go ahead. I guess, is that conforming bedrooms?
I don't know if we have a whole lot of four adults living with that many children. That's a lot of kids, and that's not very common. Occupancy use and use standards for the ADU is inherent, it's 1654C7. And there is, the, "It shall be the same and is applicable to the principal dwelling on the same lot. An ADU shall be considered a separate and distinct dwelling from the principal dwelling on the property for the purpose of defining a household as determined by this code. The applicant agrees to provide annual documentation of compliance with the following regulations in order to continue the active rental use of one of the structures." This was in our packet, if you want to just go to the shortcut.
Which page?
This is staff concerns with administrative process for owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. I, yeah, they're just taking away the yearly thing. You don't have to check that on. I don't, I don't think that. New code still has the same occupancy requirements, though, as the single-family dwelling with the limitations of the International Maintenance Code. I mean, it's kind of a fire code issue. You know what I'm saying? The fire department would not let 20 people live in a little bedroom house, is what I'm trying to get at. And I think that that is satisfactory.
Thank you. Tina?
So I think it's clear that we don't have a lot of consensus on the definition of household and occupancy. I'm wondering if, I know that it's not questioned for staff time, but perhaps as a discussion point. Erin, to your point of not having this language necessarily in code, I would settle for an appendix to the code, perhaps with a chart that could guide some of our decision-making. Let's include the square footage, let's include number of rooms in the house, let's include heartbeats per room. Some of those rules outside of our city that guide those pieces. I think that that would get us closer to some good decision-making. And I'm hearing more and more clearly, maybe it doesn't live in the code, but I think an appendix or attachment to code could be appropriate.
Can I just offer, to me, it feels like we do have a window of consensus here of being less restrictive than current code, but not as open-ended as it's stated now. I mean, can we talk about, that's kind of where we're circling?
Yeah, I agree. And I was hoping that we maybe could come up with a definition that would be maybe not completely open to have 20 people and have their four kids or whatever, but isn't limiting different family members or different family units from living together if that's how they so choose?
Is that something that we can include in our recommendation to city council is?
Yes.
Come up with something that's around this window?
So could that be the recommendation, is the question, as opposed to us trying to debate it, I guess, in point of amendment, for a point of order, for an amendment, Vicki? Can we request that city council make that definition? Or do we have to provide clear direction for them to move forward?
So under our current code, the provisions on amendments to the UDC essentially permit, or how the commission is required to review the proposed amendment and the recommendation of city staff, and hold a public hearing on the proposed amendment. And then, following that hearing, the commission may recommend to the council adoption, rejection, or modification of the proposed amendment. So I would say that under our current code, the commission could make recommendations that would modify the current proposed amendment to Title 16.
But that would have to be a specific modification.
You know, our code doesn't make that specific requirement. I believe ideally, that might be what is anticipated. But if it is something that's more open-ended.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Vicki. And I would like to come up with something if we're going to do that. I think that a household, you know, can be defined in a lot of different ways, and I don't think we should be limiting it unrestricted, like just unilaterally. But if we can come up with a definition, I would like to. Does having four unrelated individuals up to two people per bedroom seem like a reasonable accommodation? And if not, then let's hear a different one. Erin? Sure.
I think it seems reasonable. I think the limitation per bedroom, I think it's a little wonky because we have a building code. And so I would, because we can, through the code, regulate size or things like, you know, I don't know if that might be a bit of an overreach to include the bedroom piece. And I don't have that expertise, and I shared a bedroom with many sisters. So that's hard for me to say.
Because the bedrooms aren't necessarily defined. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I offer another suggestion?
Please, yeah.
I fully support, like, the expanding this, maybe as a measure now to move an expansion forward until we can get additional study on it, would be to go with Michelle's recommendation of four, you know, four unrelated, with the caveat that we would like to see, you know, more of the studies from the task force as well as, you know, some additional presentations and things like that for expanding it further. One thought.
I can support that. I agree with what Michelle put forward originally. I do think that we need to be careful when we're looking at bedrooms or anything like that, and perhaps not include that right now in the recommendation. I mean, you have to think of parents with babies in their bedrooms and, you know, all kinds of configurations. So I don't want to dictate how people use their bedrooms or their space within the house, but I do think a limitation on the number of bodies allowed in the house is wise.
And did you define what that limit would be? Would it be four?
I'm good with four. I'd consider five, but I think four seems to be where we're sitting right now, and I would support that.
Camille?
I agree. I can get behind the number four, and additional studies and future amendments based on those studies could be made.
Michelle?
I can agree to that, but I'm going to come back on ADUs and want further limits on it because I think that's still too many people for an ADU. But for a general, moving things forward, I'm okay.
Thank you. Brenda?
I'm good, as written.
Okay, Carl?
Yeah, that sounds good. One thing that I keep thinking about is somebody's going to come in, buy four houses, and they're just going to charge $200 a head to live there. No limits, they just ignore all the limits. And they just have 30 people per house making a fortune out of that. You could, $200 a head is, with rent is $2,000 a month now, you could probably get that pretty easy.
Where are we?
Oh, we.
So are you okay with the definition of the households that Kate proposed, which I'm going to have her restate one more time, make sure that I've written it down?
It's up to four unrelated persons would be the change.
So removing the text afterwards, plus their children? Sorry, I had that open, and then I went away from it.
Whether they're adults or children or whatnot, just four unrelated persons. I would like to see that expanded in the future, but I would like some additional data to go along with that and information.
Okay, so that was topic number one. Topic number two, ADUs. I think there's two parts of that. Michelle, as you noted, the, whether we have a different definition of household for an ADU, as well as the ownership requirements, I think are the two topics that I wanted to make sure that we touched on. So, does anyone want to kick us off?
Well, just, let's clarify what's in the code. So it is one ADU for R1A, R1B, and R1C, right? It is multiple ADUs for 2A, 2B, which is multi-unit today, and MUR3B A and B, which is also multi-unit today. Is that right, everybody?
No.
All right, pull it up, then. Let's get everybody on board on the same page. That's what I said, one.
No, you said it starts at three, it doesn't start till down.
R2A is, oh, R2A is, one. So the only time that there's multi-unit is R2A, corner lot, and R2B. And that is not, you sure that's the ADU page? Isn't that the?
Right here, ADU.
Okay.
But I don't have the second page.
All right, so no, we don't have it in R2A at all. R2B, one to three. So just, we don't have the MUR, that's okay, you don't have the second page. But I know, because MUR3B is multi, is MU for multi. So the idea behind, so everybody else is just one, except for the places where we have multi-unit today. The idea behind that is so, is because you can today do a scrape and build a multi-tenant. But if we allow people to, instead of scraping and put little cottages behind their house, they're more likely, if you give them that permission, they're less likely to scrape and keep the original house intact, which then is the smaller, older houses that Inglewood's known for and more affordable. But I just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's only one ADU, and it's for R1. And I am.
Also, I guess, it's just one detached ADU, right? If there's more than one ADU, they have to be attached in those R2 and R3 districts?
Right, one has to be attached, is that right?
Only one can be detached.
Only one can be detached, so it's a basement, really?
So you could have one detached unit, and then I think up to, so then you'd have one primary residence, then you could have two attached ADUs, so one might be in the basement upstairs, and then one detached. So you couldn't have multiple ADU cottages detached.
Yeah, you couldn't really do the three cottage thing that I was kind of saying, but I was, yeah, I had it in my mind. That it's just simply a substitution for what they would scrape and build anyway. Only we're giving them permission to incentivize them not to develop the property in that way. And then therefore, gentrification happens.
That was my understanding of it. Also, Brenda, thank you for making that clarification. Other thoughts on it? Erin?
Yeah, I just, again, for flexibility for people to use their property in ways that are continuing to evolve, multi-generational. property in ways that are continuing to evolve, multi-generational households. I'm an advocate for one detached ADU. I don't know if I'm for, I, I don't, I'm not gonna offer opinion on, on a basement plus a detached, so two ADUs on one property. But I think expanding the ability of R1 zones to build a single detached ADU, I'm for. I do like the idea of bringing back the owner occupancy in the primary, or, or either, either primary or accessory. With, with maybe a sunset, I, I think that gives some ability for neighborhoods to kind of ease into this a little bit. But you know, we're, we're, we're a fully built-out city. I, I hear the people that say we don't need more people, that's not really up to us. People will, will be here. And so how do we, how do we, how do we put some things in place to, to do that in a, in a smart way? And I think this is one. It's not a panacea, it's not gonna solve affordable housing, but it does add some flexibility, especially for some of those multi-generational uses, which we are seeing more and more and more of. So that's, that's my, my take on it.
Thank you, Erin. Other thoughts? Go ahead, Michelle.
Is this the time I can talk about having, limiting the household that lives in the ADU?
Yes, I, I, I would like to maybe make sure we're, we're putting the number of ADUs or the allowance of ADUs in R1. Like to a, a final discussion. If you want to bring that up, though, I'm, I mean, it's all related, so go for it.
Yeah, I, I, again, don't think that, that ADUs belong in any of the R1 districts. The people who have purchased property here, no matter what district they're in, it's usually their primary asset. And they spend years protecting their space and privacy. And that we have unique position of not just enforcing what's on each individual lot, but also the responsibility of looking out for the general benefit of the community. And in that respect, again, I'll go back to, I don't think that, that they belong in the R1 districts at all. The, those, those homes that people live in, purchase them usually at a higher cost per, for the ground than normal, than you would purchase a house on another kind of lot. They pay for that privacy of having one hot, house on each lot and expecting all their neighbors to have one house on their lot and not any ADUs is not outrageous. In fact, it's expected by those people who purchase those houses. So I don't like having ADUs in any of the R1 districts for that very reason. And of course, I'm gonna go back to, I don't think, I think it's crazy to even consider three, three ADUs in anywhere. Nobody else in the state has, that, in that, that little spreadsheet that Brian made for us, nobody else in the state even considers it. And only Denver and I think Wheatbridge or something got rid of the parking requirement for the ADUs as well. So I don't understand why we're trying to be these super-duper density people here in Inglewood. I don't think that that's what our job is. I don't think our job is to increase the density of, of Inglewood. If you look back at our guiding principles, that word density is not in, in that document at all. And I think the whole density thing, to be honest, came about just after the first of the year, when there was that bill that was presented to the legislature. And that's when city council started tracking all these extra density things, upping the household limit, adding ADUs, all those things. And to me, that's a trend. And that's what our guiding principles say we should not be doing, is to be trying to, to fit in with the trends. So you guys all know where I stand on this, so I'm not surprising anybody here, so.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but to make sure that we're clarifying, three are only allowed in the R2B. But that's, but you can have a triplex on that lot.
That's a whole different ball.
Why, why is that different than?
Michelle, can you make sure your mic's on?
To me, that's a different ball of wax, because that is managed by somebody in a duplex. Some, I mean, it's been managed between the two people there and that sort of thing. ADUs are, are most likely going to be used for short-term rentals. And you, you're, I mean, sure, talk to anybody in the city who has a short-term rental next to you. Likely, probably have 50/50, people are very unhappy with that short-term rental next to them. And it's because of the management. So I just think that having three ADUs back there with potentially four unrelated people each, I just think it's a management problem.
Erin?
I, I just wanted to add, I've, I've read a lot on this, and I haven't seen anywhere where ADUs have reduced property values. Not to argue, but just to point that out there. I know, just to one of the points that you made, Michelle. And then the other, yes, it, I think our guiding principles don't talk about density, but I think they do about inclusivity and sustainability and values like that. That may or may not point to density. It's interesting, somebody was in here earlier that said, look at Europe. Well, there's, there's lots of countries in Europe that really don't have single-family homes. We're not advocating for that. But, you know, I don't think we should just always consider density the boogeyman and if, if we have some guardrails and if we have some, a smart approach to this, I don't think we have to fear some of those things.
Can I speak to the short-term rentals? Because, yeah, they were a problem for a while. And city, the city had, had to tackle that recently with some legislation, so there's a big barrier to getting an STR now, and it's about a thousand dollars just to get started up. And those who are, who don't get licensed now, they're going to Airbnb and finding them. The other thing they did, I'm trying to think now, oh, well, you know, there was a lot of speculative buying during the pandemic. A lot of properties got bought and a lot of STRs went out there, and now the, and now the market is glutted. And people are pulling a lot of them back. That's not to say that that won't happen if somebody builds one. But their other option is to house a relative or disabled person. So that is what happened on our block. My neighbor built his for his adult autistic son, and we have, we've only had 10. I mean, if we allow more ADUs, I don't think that we're going to have a giant influx of suddenly everybody building just because of the price of, of building that was pointed out in earlier testimony. It costs, a lot of you know that I converted my garage and it costs a lot of money. And I don't short-term rental it, I just rent it out to nurses. So it's, it's really, I'm, I don't fear that it's gonna change the character of R1. And you know, I'd like to remind everybody, as that's why I got on this council, is because I was taken aback by slot homes and the character of R2 and what was happening up there. And that a lot of this code is now a good compromise, and it is bringing a lot of that size and bulk down. And I don't think that with the design standards that we have in place that residents in R1 will be impacted to the point where that it would hurt their quality of life.
Thank you, Brenda. Yeah, I, I'd like to touch on the, the short, or I'm sorry, the owner occupancy side of the ADU. I think that a lot of the things that we have heard and our concerns from individuals have to do with not having good representation from the ownership on, on the property. I think, as much as I, I wouldn't have thought I would have said this before, I think I'm leaning towards having a requirement that it is an owner-occupied main unit with support, or to have an ADU added, added on, under the house. I don't know if others have thoughts. Kate?
And I think that our zoning code typically looks at use, it looks at size requirements. It looks like, it, it, it looks at the scale of building, not who occupies it, in my mind. And, and I hear the concerns in terms of the owner occupied or being able to call a particular person. I think there's other tools that we would need to put in place, that we, as a city, should really consider putting in place to address some of the concerns that come from the, you know, wanting to have the, the owner occupancy piece. So I think it's a, a matter of zoning creep for a land use code to really require an owner occupancy piece to it. And I think it has the negative impacts on equity. Typically renters have lower incomes. They're often, you know, more racially diverse. They're not lesser than those of us that own homes. So I, I think that's something that we really should be, be careful. We shouldn't assume that renters are bad neighbors, and that we really should think about our local officials thinking about enforcing our housing codes, our nuisance codes, our other codes, our blight ordinances, and not have owner occupancy in the code. And I, I would be for a sunsetting piece of it or something like that. I saw in the email, as well as some of the research I did, there's case law that goes against having owner occupancy in a code from both New Jersey and, and from North Carolina. There's no substantial relation to public health or welfare is what some of the courts have found in terms of owner occupancy. And in addition to that, it puts, you know, lenders are less likely to finance something that's owner-occupied. And it really can, you know, constrain, constrain the supply. Because essentially, we're reducing the amount of available rental units. So that's my stance on it.
Tina?
To your point about the financing piece, I was surprised and further informed with the AARP report provided to us that it is an actual barrier in securing a loan to do the changes to your property. And so that definitely needs to be taken into consideration. And, and also in that report, there's just a wealth of information on, you know, various cities throughout the United States that I think we could look a little more closely at size and demographic and see what's comparable to Inglewood. I was looking at like Beaverton, Oregon. My daughter actually lives out there. I think it's, it's a pretty comparable city to look at, and there are a handful, both within Colorado and out. So that could inform us a little bit more on some of these decisions that we have to make around ADUs.
Erin?
Yeah, I just, really, there's, there's two reasons why I would consider owner occupancy with a sunset. A concession to those who are concerned about dramatic change to the character of their neighborhood. To ease into it, but then also I am really concerned about corporate ownership of single-family homes. It's just a, it's, it's a real deal, and it's a big barrier for, for people that are trying to build wealth. And, yeah, so those are the two reasons why. Again, I would only be an advocate for it with, with some sort of provision for it and/or to be renewed in the future.
Carl?
The the R1, R1, 2, 3, I think they should have a limit of one in, in any, or all of them. The medical districts, not even sure if there's any, there's very few houses over there anymore. They're all, it's all apartments and duplexes and triplexes, so I'm not sure about that. But anyway, in the R, R districts, one per, per household. Owner occupancy, just to keep tabs on what's going on there. And I don't think they need to be built to increase density. I think they need to be built for affordability. Density, we, we already have the density in Inglewood. We don't need more density. We do need affordability. And to build an ADU and have your son or daughter in there, or your parents in there, you're not gonna charge them $2,000 a month, so. But one per, one per lot, owner occupancy, and then possibility of having a attached ADU. Not sure about that, yeah.
Thanks, Carl. I guess my only challenge to that, and what I've been trying to think about, is, is been mentioned a few times. There's a relatively good amount of housing stock that, at least compared to the rest of the metro area, has some affordability to it. What I believe the allowance of having three, up to three in the R2B allows that existing family, single-family home that maybe is 800 square feet, but on a larger lot to be maintained there and have two outbuildings, two ADUs, three ADUs, but I'm sorry, only one can be external and then and attached in a basement, ADUs, instead of tearing that down and basically getting rid of that one affordable unit that was there.
I wonder if we couldn't do this, kind of a compromise area. And that is, since ADUs are new to R1A and R1B, we make that owner occupied for now. And everything else not owner occupied. What would you think about kind of that middle? What would you guys think about that?
I kind of like that. I'm not sure what others feel, because I, I think one of the biggest, what feels like the bigger concern are those R1 areas that have the most contesting, I guess I would say, to it. So I, I think it's an interesting approach, Brenda, and I'd love to hear others. Erin?
My gut response is that, as we're kind of picking winners and losers there.
That was, was kind of my, like, tell me more about what's the basis for that decision and treating those zone districts differently in terms of?
Oh, because it's incremental, because we've allowed ADUs in the other areas, and we really haven't had that much growth. So it wouldn't hurt to maybe let those then not be owner occupied in the existing zones where they're allowed. But since this is new to R1A and B, and they do have a lot of fear that we make those owner occupied and maybe sunset it after 10 years. Just since this is a new thing for them, that, and those districts have been treated special so far. I don't see why it wouldn't be any different to keep going with that theme.
Um, so I think that sort of traditionally that R1 zoning has been used to sort of redline and create these exclusive areas where people, you know, they work hard and they have the privilege of owning a single-family property on a lot. And I think that the introduction of 1ADU sort of creates a little bit of diversity in that housing stock. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I think one of the great parts about living in Inglewood is how accessible it is and how inclusive it feels to be here and you know, be surrounded by all different kinds of people. And I think that this is an opportunity to increase that without creating a density that is uncomfortable.
Thank you. Other thoughts on that?
We didn't address parking for the ADU.
Sure, Gwen.
Well, you know what I'm gonna say.
Get rid of all the parking, right?
No, I'm gonna say you absolutely have to have parking, absolutely.
Let's go into the parking discussion for ADUs. Michelle, how do you feel?
I think I just told you. No, I think it's a serious problem. I think that you do need to provide parking. I think that's another thing that it's not just about that individual property, but it's about keeping the neighborhood character and things like that. And that to have, you need to have that parking for the, for the ADU. So that everybody on this, you know, especially since we might have four adults back there with four cars on the street. I'm just saying, I think, I think that it's, you need to have the parking because otherwise we're making a big impact on individual homeowners and individual neighborhoods, and I think we need to keep our individual neighborhood character.
Thank you, Michelle. Tina?
I agree with Michelle. However, I'm willing to compromise if we can get some wins around, you know, blended family homes and what those can look like, or blended households in general in reducing any discriminatory practices.
Do you want me to give my usual spiel about the parking? You've heard it. Like I said, there are unintended consequences, and I'm glad you said neighborhood character. Because parking was required for the ADU near Jason Park, they had to build the ADU above the garage. So you have all these single ranch homes and now, poof, little top, and the unintended consequences that's for their grandmother. And now she has to go upstairs. I believe my, based on my very personal experience that parking, off-street parking spaces will be market-driven. Renters do not want to Renters do not want to park on the street. We have, as witnessed by all our problems with breaking into cars and stuff and getting their car stolen. I, every time I have a renter coming up, they, that's the number one thing they want to know is where do I park my car? Do you have a space? And I do. Keep in mind too, there are on average two spaces off-street in front of the house. And the single-family residence is required to have parking space. Do I think it's likely that somebody's going to break, to build an 800 square foot, which is the max, 800 square foot ADU? And put four adults in there, each with a car? I don't think that's very likely at all.
Other thoughts?
Requiring parking reduces the affordability and the potential of an ADU. We have the requirement in there that you cannot remove an existing parking space. And if you're putting one ADU in there, I think, like was just mentioned, the, the size limits on the ADU are going to limit the number of people that are of driving age especially that are able to be in it. So I, I am fine with keeping parking out of the ADUs.
I'm also in support of it in, in the, of removing parking requirements, keeping the parking requirements out of it. Because if we're trying to do what is considered an accessory unit that is supposed to be for, you know, a, a younger family potentially, maybe people that don't have a car, don't want to do that, that maybe they want to have a e-bike and go around town using that. So I think there are plenty of opportunities and I think that there's not been a ton of onslaught of ADUs, even though they're allowed in, in other areas. And I, I don't think adding a requirement that there needs to be additional parking is going to make any more likelihood of those ADUs coming. So I think I, I would be in support of not, of keeping it the way we have it of not requiring additional parking.
Well, I'd like to point out that the places where you're allowing up to three ADUs are probably the most dense areas of, of town around Swedish and Craig Hospital. And potentially putting, having four units, the main house and three ADUs and all the people that come with it. Uh, and not, not requiring any parking at all. Of, of course, the main house has to have two parking spots, but I just think that you're really going to have some very, very congested areas around Swedish and Craig Hospital. And the people who do live there in those apartments, there are some single-family houses, but a lot of them have been redeveloped. You have some very unhappy people that basically we have created that problem for them.
Um, so generally I think that we've, um, built a lot of environment around automobiles and autocentric environments. And, uh, in my opinion, which might not be the popular opinion, I think that when you decrease the automobile-centric opportunities, then you're increasing the maybe desire for people to use multimodal transportation. So I guess I would be in favor of maybe parking out of ADUs as well.
Thank you for saying that, Camille, so I didn't have to.
And realistically, those areas around Swedish, they have the, the circulator that is it, an incredible feature that I think we could add and make a little bit better. But is something that I think every city in this region would love to have. And we have it and it should be utilized way more efficiently. Other thoughts?
Or even expanded on. Love to see that.
Yeah.
It's funded by RTD, so go talk to them. I think they're kind of out of money.
Yeah. Yep. There's a lot of expansion that happened lately. I think we'll hopefully see the fruits of that labor in, in the future.
Yeah, free fares last month, this month, yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully to make, make it more accessible to a lot of people that might not be able to have other options. So, um, any other comments on, on parking side of things? Okay. Those were the, the two, I think, major, major topics for, that I wanted to make sure we touched on. Does anybody else have topics that they, and those being the household and ADUs, there's obviously a lot of factors within each one of those. Were there any other topics that people wanted to discuss before we consider whether we want to put um, some sort of amendment together before we even propose, um, whether we're moving forward or not? With a, does that make sense? Okay. Uh, Brenda?
Can we take a, a human being break?
Yes, I'm, I had actually thought about that. Can we take a five-minute break for, uh, people to use the facility if needed? Okay, um, do we need to pause recording or anything like that? Get started here again, if, um, we could keep the background noise, once we get started back to a minimum, we'll continue our, our conversations. Yeah. You, you want me to use, all right, here we go, just for you, buddy. Nancy, are we recording again? Okay, all right. Thanks, everyone, for allowing us to have a, a small break. Appreciate everyone's ability to get back here, even though I got a little sidetracked. So, um, let's move forward. I believe we've made the discussions, um, on households and, and ADUs. I think now would be the time where we would discuss whether we would like to propose amendments or, um, approve it as a, propose, approve it as is, propose, approve with amendments or propose to reject the, the code is written. Yeah, Erin?
I have a question. I, I feel like for household size, we got to, like I said, a window of consensus. I'm not clear if we did that for ADUs though. I think everybody shared their thoughts. But are we sort of circling a consensus or are we still far apart on that?
It would be helpful, at least for me, if we could kind of go through some of the points of ADUs that we had talked about. Like the, um, the owner occupancy piece, the where it's allowed, like a few of those, um, just to be clear.
Let, let's, yeah, let's do where it was allowed, where it is allowed first. Currently, as proposed, I should say, because currently isn't the correct term there. As proposed, one ADU is allowed in R1A lots greater than 9,000 square feet. One ADU is allowed, allowed in R1Bs greater than 7,200 square feet. One ADU is allowed in R1C greater than 4,500 square feet. And R2A also is only one ADU. R2B allows up to three with a 3,000 minimum on a 3,000 square foot lot. So I believe Michelle had a request to change that to, well, Michelle, could you maybe clarify what you are requesting to change? And I think we can discuss that from there.
Um, of the first point I would, would request is that there not be ADUs allowed in the R1 A and B zone districts. I would say not even R1C, but it's already in the code, so.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Uh, I, I believe with the allowance for over 7,200 square feet and 9,000 square feet, my opinion is I would, uh, like to see them allowed in those units. Other, other thoughts? Oh, you know, that's a good point, Tina. Um, Erin, what do you think? I'll start with you.
Yeah, I'm a proponent of R1A and B adding one ADU, um, for, for that, those zone districts. I think that the sizing, the maximum size of the ADU, um, I think it's appropriate, allows flexibility for people to, um, to allow for addition, you know, additional use on their property, um, to fit their family and their, you know, their, what their desires are. I think with the bulk plane changes and height restrictions, um, I think we've done this in a pretty measured way. So I'm for it.
Thank you, Erin. Tina?
I agree with that. Great.
All right, Camille?
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, so we're talking size here. Michelle?
Um, are, are we talking about the up to three in the R2B and continuing on?
If, if you'd like to. Yeah, um, I mean, I think we're talking about where we're allowing ADUs. You noted you don't want any in R1A or B.
And I, I think, like I said before, the chart that Brian created for us that had all of the metro area, there's nobody that allows three ADUs. And I think that that's maybe something we'd like to do down the road. But as a first step, I think that's a little, little strong. I'd limit it to one.
Thank you, Michelle. Brenda?
I'll just, I concur that with, um, one ADU now in, um, R1A, 1B. And like I said, I really don't want to see any more houses scraped in, um, R2B. So I think if we can let them, um, just expand their existing house, that I will definitely keep it more affordable than people who come in and scrape and build 800 million dollar duplexes. So that's why I am a proponent of multiple ADUs in R2B and MUR3ABC.
Thank you, Brenda. Carl?
Can I get a little clarification on R2B? What, how do you get three ADUs on a lot?
Is that a question that we can ask Chris just to make clarification? I mean, I could try to explain it, but I'd probably butcher it.
Yeah. The discussion is correct that it was done for districts that already allowed three and four plexes anyway. So the idea of unbundling them. So in the ADU specific sections in chapter four, there's also a minimum lot size per unit. So you don't just get one on the smallest unit. And then as was mentioned before, there's could only be one that's detached. So there's still only one outbuilding. So any property that gets up to four units is going to have to have a minimum, it's 2,000 per unit. So it'd have to have a minimum of 8,000 square feet. So there would be a unit in the main building and then up to one or two accessory units in, in that main building. And then there could be an outbuilding. So that's the only way to get to four. It'd have to be on a larger lot.
Okay, detached, uh, all I can go with is one on any R district, basically, so.
So that even the way it's written right now, Carl, you could only have one outbuilding? So you're in support of the way it is written?
I was confused on that too, so.
Just, just one on the R2B?
One outbuilding or one ADU?
AD, ADU.
Okay, so.
Detached.
Deep, but can you have another attached?
So what they're saying is, yeah, so you have like basement is one ADU. And then attached to the back, like if you're going to take your patio and expand it, that's still attached. And you're okay with that if the third one then is detached?
The way it is currently written, you can have up to three ADUs in R2B, but only one can be an external building. And you're, I, I, I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that you're saying you're okay as long as it's only one external building.
One unattached.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's so confusing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So from what I'm, I'm hearing, um, generally speaking, we have a consensus with leaving the ADUs as they are currently shown in, in the code. Okay. Owner occupancy, uh, let's go down the line. Erin?
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of torn there. Um, I agree with Kate that, um, dictating use is problematic. I'm also sensitive to the two things I mentioned earlier. Concern of, of residents and change to the, to their neighborhoods and then also corporate ownership of single family homes. So, um, if, if there were to be some sort of owner occupancy requirement, I would like to see an end date.
I'm fine with sticking to the language, um, in the definition of terms 1322 for household. In keeping the limits as they exist.
Are we, that's, I, I think we're talking about ADU.
Oh, we're talking about ADU. I don't, I do not feel that it should be a requirement as long as there's owner occupancy in the primary residence.
And that, that's, do you need a owner occupancy of the, okay. Okay, thank you. Kate?
I am not in favor of the owner occupancy, but I'd be willing to look at a sunset piece for it.
I guess I'm a little bit torn also with some of the information that we discussed tonight. But generally, I would really like to see owner occupancy on a lot. Because I just think it creates a, um, maybe a more comfortable environment for neighbors when there's renters, um, especially with multiple ADUs. And also, again, um, staying away from corporate ownership and investment properties. That's something that I think really impacts affordable housing opportunities and is very disappointing. So I guess I lean towards in, in favor of owner occupancy, but.
Would, would you consider the sunset?
Yes.
Michelle?
Of course I want owner occupancy, yes. And no sunset, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, Brenda?
Yeah, it's a tough one. That really is. Um, but I'm going to agree with Kate, no owner occupancy with a sunset.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you say owner occupancy with a sunset?
I said, no owner occupancy, but I would consider, uh, voting for it if we had a sunset.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Owner occupancy and sunset, no, I don't want to see 180Us built and no owner occupancy and have 50 of them be in a party house. We're going to have Inglewood as being a focus for party houses. So I don't want to see that.
Sounds like a fun town.
Carl, could you clarify though, are, so you're saying you need an owner, owner occupancy?
Owner occupancy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, with that, I, I, I think the only way we would get the owner occupancy to pass is with a sunset. And so, uh, maybe as a, as a note to ourselves, as we're considering amendments, um, I, I'm going to propose that we put the owner occupancy in with a 10-year sunset on it. Kate?
Like the, um, household definition in terms of also kind of bringing that back to the Affordable Housing Task Force? Is that something, uh, would they be able to also consider the owner occupancy piece? Because my main concern of it is equity and affordability. And so is that something they can also look at and give us a sense of what would be a reasonable sunset? I don't know if 10 years is the right sunset, my mind.
Um, I, maybe, if, if we can ask staff, uh, what is scoped in? Well, I guess that's, that, that hasn't been officially compiled yet. Or do you have something that you're looking for here? And if I?
The city council has a website with some of the pieces that the, um, task force is tasked with. So I'll see if I can find that.
If I may, you know, we can change, legislation can change later. I mean, it can be amended. You know, and, and the task force is going to be quite some time. You know, it's going to be a long, long process. And I think that, um, we do want to move this forward if we can.
So I, I, I'm proposing 10-year sunset. And if that gets amended at some point in time in the future, that's a, a test that is, happens at that point.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just have one other, I don't know if, if Inglewood already does this, but, um, some sort of rental registry alternative?
So that's, we don't, and that's something I think that would be a piece of legislation that would be, that council should put forward. Like I said, if, if we knew too, if we had a better idea of where are the rentals located in the city, we could target rental areas with incentives towards housing. There's so much information out there that we just don't have because we don't ask rentals to just, just check in with the city and just register with the city. That's all we need them to do. And that, a lot of these problems can be, don't need to be solved within our code book, but with legislation. So it's a very good question.
Okay, 10-year sunset with a rental registry. And that's going to cover probably all rentals then at that point, just as a.
I think that's a separate, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I'm sure, go ahead, Erin.
I was just gonna say, I think that's conflating two issues that need specific focus on separately.
Yeah, um, it, short-term rentals are required in here to obtain business licenses, just as an aside. Yeah, um, it, short-term rentals are required in here to obtain business licenses, just as an aside. So that is covered in this document. Um, and so I think if we're talking about an owner occupancy and having that additional requirement that there is a license or a registration, I think that can be part of this same conversation or same the requirement, that if we're talking about an owner occupancy for, for ten years and a rent, rental registry for the AD, maybe it's just for ADUs then.
Um, so I was kind of thinking, uh, if we did put a sunset on the owner occupancy, it would be maybe with the long-term rental registry in mind for all rentals, not just short-term rentals, to, um, sort of get a, a baseline of Inglewood renters.
I mean, I know, um, Denver just required that also. Um, it's something that they are, are doing right now to try to make, you know, a, a living, make sure that houses are up to speed. You have to have an inspection done and, and things like that. And that's gonna be required, I think, at the beginning of the year um, for all, all homes or all rentals at all, their multi-units are already required to do that. So, um, I think because we're, we're trying to get it connected to ADU, I would lean towards having that just, uh, registry just for ADUs at this point. Um, I, I don't know if this is the correct document for all rentals to be subject to it.
No, I, I think that's out of scope. And they did describe how they did, um, owner occupancy verification previously. So that, that's something that's in, if not in place, can be, I mean, they've done it before.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, separate from this, I'm not saying included in this document at all. I'm just saying that that's a solution that's council needs to consider.
Okay, uh, Michelle, just a second, Tina, okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Uh, I, I think that we've got enough in this notebook without doing rental registries. So that's just my opinion. I also think it's a privacy issue, and it is, there is a thing outlined for when you want a short-term rental. And it did say at the top that, um, that staff said that they hadn't had that many problems with it in, in the past. So I think just, let's not add rental registry, we got enough here.
Okay, so ten-year sunset. All right, next, uh, household. I'm gonna give you a break, Karen, because you started everyone, Carl, go ahead, yeah?
We're gonna do parking on ADUs?
Um, well, I guess to make sure we have consensus, Carl, why don't you, um, go ahead and, and say, uh, we'll, we'll go, yeah, let's do parking on ADUs and, and see where that consensus lies.
I, I think there should be some kind of a limit on, uh, a requirement for parking of like one, one parking spot, de- depending on how many, it doesn't matter how many people are in the ADU, just one parking spot per building.
Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, no parking requirement.
Thank you, Brenda, uh, Michelle?
Yes, the parking requirement.
Okay.
I support the ADU parking as proposed.
Thank you, uh, Kate?
I support it as proposed as well, and I think that helps with affordability.
Do you?
As part one parking spot.
Uh, as proposed.
And I'm also going as proposed as it is, so, um, that would be, uh, how many do we have here, seven, uh, four to three, right? Do we have eight, five, three, thank you, okay. Uh, thank you, Nancy, um, it's getting late. Okay, thank you, Carl, for that reminder. Um, now, I think the other topic that we wanted to talk about is uh, household, uh, definition and keeping as is or making a modification. So Carl, I'll start on your end, um, where do you see that?
I think there should be a limit on the, uh, the number of people, but it can be pretty high. And just, basically, the, the number of people in the house should kind of govern how many people are gonna be in there. I mean, that's, that's, that may not be functional, cause it's, depending on the situation, it it could be a lot of people in a house, but, uh, you would, you would think they would limit themselves some, somewhat.
So are you saying that you are okay with the household definition as written?
The, uh, there should be a limit, but a very high limit.
And, and so it's, I think the question is, the way it's written, some people would like it to be more restrictive. So you're saying you're okay with the limit as written? That is not as restrictive as some?
That, that's probably fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Carl, uh, Brenda?
As proposed.
Michelle?
Uh, I scratch off the, it could be up to four unrelated people and scratch the rest of the thing that, with all their grandkids and all that stuff, and I'd be fine.
Thank you, Michelle.
Um, so I'm okay with it as proposed, but I think we also talked about, um, a limit of four with changing that potentially as studies uh, for, in affordable housing are done, um, so I would support either of those.
Kate?
I'm sorry, Kate, can you put your mic on?
Sorry about that, up to four unrelated persons, um, and then be willing to, um, expand upon that with more information from the Housing Task Force.
As, as proposed, um, with the recommendation to council that the task force be tasked with the studying that we asked for this evening, with hospital expansion.
Thank you, Aaron?
I'm good with as proposed with the, um, caveat that this should be regulated through code, uh, building code, maintenance code, housing, house, or, um, habitability standards.
Okay, um, I think I'm, I'm, I would like to propose it as is with the Affordable Housing Study, um, influencing it, um, if, if needed. Yeah, okay, um, so that would be, uh, change on that one, um. Are there other topics, um, that we feel like we would want to make amendments on? Uh, I guess if I'm, if we're not seeing any, I think now would be the time that if someone wanted to make a motion to either approve or deny with amendments or not with amendments, um, we could then.
I have one more comment.
Yeah, Aaron, go ahead.
Um, this was from last time, last meeting, um, somebody talking about the threshold for historic designation being brought down from seventy-five to sixty-five. I think that's reasonable, and I'd like to include that as an amendment.
Uh, further discussion on that, Kate?
With this being a new addition to the code, I personally would be okay with leaving it at seventy-five and leaving it at a, a super majority. And then seeing how it goes and seeing how, you know, um, maybe there's, you know, more recommendations that come from the, um, Historic Preservation Commission or something like that. So I'm okay with keeping it at seventy-five.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, say that again?
This was a.
Carl, did you mean Kate or Aaron?
Uh, this was brought up, um, by a member of the public last, um, meeting about the code changes, the threshold requirement to get a historic designation, and I don't have all the details here.
It went from fifty-one percent.
For a neighborhood, um, from, um, from sixty-five percent up to seventy-five percent. The neighbors have to agree, have to sign on basically to, uh, request that designation.
One more piece, I, I believe it's fifty-one percent currently, and then the code is now written to show seventy-five percent, and that neighbor requested that it would go down to sixty-five percent for historic designation. Yeah, okay, yeah. So other discussion on that, Carl?
Um, I'm looking more at sixty, sixty-five percent.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Uh, Brenda?
Yeah, it gave us a lot of thought, because as you know, I, I do like, uh, historical society, and I've, I've got family that have been here a long time. And I think they were specifically trying to think about Arapahoe Acres, um. You know, if you, if you do have, if you do form a committee to fill something like this and you wanna put on solar panels, uh, you have to not only deal with the local permitting bureaucracy, but then you have to get approval from everybody, i- and if you, if it's a historical designation. I don't think that Arapahoe Acres has a lot to worry about based on the home value and, and, uh, um, mid-century modern homes are so popular, but sixty-five percent sounds like a really good idea. I think seventy-five seems a little high. Fifty percent maybe was where, was just worrisome because of what they were thinking, it'd be too bureaucratic. So I'm on board for sixty-five.
Michelle?
One thing I'm fine with.
Michelle, could you, with sixty-five, go to sixty-five, okay, thank you.
I agree with sixty-five.
Uh, you know, I, I honestly think seventy-five, I, I have a hard time telling somebody who doesn't wanna be in a historic district per se that they have to be that. But, um, in order to help with the consensus of it, I'm, I'm good with sixty-five percent also. So that would be, uh, historic neighborhood, sixty-five percent. All right. Um, any other topics that we wanted for, to discuss for consideration on, um, any proposed changes to the document as written?
Chair, this is Brian, and I wanted to remind the commission that there were a series of staff requested amendments that were also provided to you to ensure that that's part of your discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And can you remind me, uh, I believe those were in the last one also, but, um, where those show up? Yes, I, the, in the separate packet? I think they were in, they're in the document also.
There, it should be attachment number two, I believe it starts around page thirty-eight of your PDF.
And, no, that's the right page. Unless, is that starting on page thirty-four text amendment? Got it? This one? Yeah, okay, um. I believe, um, Brian, can you clarify, is there any changes in the, so one of them is the entire wireless, okay, that's right, the entire wireless section gets replaced based on the information um, from our, uh, meeting last week. Um, and then the other, there's nothing in here changing the intent. It's more wording, if I'm not mistaken, is that, um, an accurate assessment?
The only, the only two things that were added was the, um, one at the very beginning that says that we want to be able to make sure that we verify and update any citations if they're incorrect. Um, and then spelling errors. And then there was one addition that's in reference to the question about the floodplain regulations. And I think it's, it's mentioned in the information that you all requested at the last hearing. And then it's just included in those requested provisions, and that's to add the words or latest version for all of those studies that are named in the floodplain regs.
And thank you for that, Brian.
So does this include the, um, request for reasonable accommodations for disabled persons? Am I on the right document, Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, give me ten seconds, cause I had pulled up actually a couple notes on that, but I wanted to make sure. Now that you said about the, the floodplain thing, that I wanted to make sure I have this correct. Okay, so this is, I think it's starting on page twenty-six of the PDF. Um, concerns of administration process for owner occupancy requirements. Is, uh, is that what you're referring to, Brian? Or is it just the other review of the other chapters?
So what I'm referring to starts on page thirty-eight of the PDF. What you are referring to is one of the responses that was given, um, relation to the questions that were asked at the last public hearing from the commission.
Thirty-eight of six hundred and sixty-six? I think we got an updated agenda. Yeah. Just wanna make sure we're all looking at the same one. Okay, so again, Brian, can you just repeat what, um, besides just text changes for clarity or spelling or things like that? The requested changes is chapter one, general provisions, um, two procedures for disabled people. Um, chapter four, zone districts and uses, commercial uses for, uh, medical marijuana cultivation and MUB two. Chapter eight, landscape design, just for striking public, and then the entire chapter eleven communications, telecommunications.
And then there should be an item for chapter ten that references section sixteen, ten-two, update to include the words or latest version when referencing specific floodplain maps, plans, or study.
Yes, and, and Colin, just for a point of reference, um, it's, it is page forty-four of six seventy-five. It's from, for the agenda that's posted for today.
Thank you, okay, that's, I've got page forty-four, there we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, and this is the same items that we're looking at, okay, great. Um, and so just to reiterate, um, at this point, we are now going to request, um, a motion to either, um, approve, um, approve with amendments or deny, uh, with amendments would be the amendments that we had discussed regarding, um, the owner occupancy, um, and historic designation. Uh, are the only two that I believe if we have amendments that would pass this, um, this commission. Um, and so if, and then the additional requested changes from staff, uh, to be included in, in that amendment. So at this point, we would, I would ask for someone, if they wanted to make a motion to do that, then we could, um, uh, vote on, on that. Anybody but me.
I move that we make the recommendation that you described to city council for the updated code along with the, um, amendments that you described.
Yeah, I think you might need to describe those.
See, this is why I didn't push the button.
Do you want me to read the back what I have and see if this, so it would be an amendment to, um, the household definition to, to be up to four unrelated persons. Uh, ADUs would be allowed, I think you came to consensus, there would be no changes to where they were permitted. they were permitted. Owner occupancy would be required for ADUs with a ten-year sunset, and that owner occupancy would either be, could either be in the ADU or in the main structure, is what I heard. Okay. Parking, I have as consensus-
That should be keepers.
For no additional parking.
Which is the way it is.
Excuse me?
As proposed in the-
As proposed, yeah, so there'd be no amendment for the parking. And then for the historic designation for the district, it would be reduced, amended from seventy-five percent to sixty-five percent. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, is that everyone is understanding as well, yeah, Michelle?
Yes. What was the count on parking?
It was five-three.
Okay, thanks.
And again, that was not an official vote, that was just, again, with the conversations that were discussed, if we want to have an amendment or something that's going to go forward, I believe these are the amendments that would pass, if not, I don't think they would, that would pass, so I think that's kind of the-
And I missed, I'm sorry, and I missed the other amendment where the staff recommended-
Thank you, yes.
If you're okay with including that in the motion to, with amendments.
So would Erin need to repeat that, or because you-
So I move, I make a motion to make the recommendations with the amendments that Ms. Fenton has just described on the record, not unanimously, but with consensus, and that's my motion.
Second.
And can we call for a vote?
We can. Miss, sorry, Ms. Townley?
I vote yes. I believe these changes were informed by a pretty robust public process, even if folks don't agree with different ways-
I'm sorry, Kate, can you get a little bit closer?
Oh, yes. Do you want me to start over? Okay, I vote yes. I believe these changes to the code were informed by a pretty robust public engagement process, and that despite not all of us agreeing, there was still a lot of outreach that occurred over the last several years by the city, as well as many hours put into this discussion by council, by our advisory committee, and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe the changes meet the criteria for text amendments set forth in the Inglewood Municipal Code, and that they're in the interest of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Inglewood has changed since this code was last updated in two thousand and three, so as a community and as a region, we should, we are growing, and we need to really start thinking about what we look like for our current as well as our future residents. There's also new patterns of housing that's emerging and desired, so I think it's necessary to update the code to be more consistent and to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan and to promote, yeah, health and the welfare of our community. There's a few comp examples I can give, sorry, this goes wrong, for goal one, and promoting a balanced mix of housing opportunities, serving the needs of the future and current residents. I think we're definitely looking at different housing opportunities through either the ADUs and different lot sizes, and also increasing housing options which can support a more diverse and quality workforce. And I also believe the code does a really good job of meeting the needs of the live goal number three, and really looking at that relationship between land use and transportation systems, and considering the context between what our buildings are and what our streets and our streetscapes offer. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Ms. Townley, I always appreciate you doing findings for me, thank you. Michelle Austin? I will vote no. I appreciate some of the, I appreciate some of the amendments that we're putting forward, and that makes things much better, but my basic premise is still the same, that this is not, that our task was not to basically rezone the residential districts, and that's what's happening here. The old code is very specific, it says R1, R1A, R1B, R1C, one dwelling unit, residential districts, multi-unit dwellings are not allowed in this district, and one thing we didn't talk about, but I'm also opposed to, is those end lot where you divided into, take a house and make two houses. But my basic premise is the same, is that people purchase a house with the zoning, and it's the city's responsibility to honor that zoning and keep all of the neighbors in that specific zoning district, basically the same with, we have a process with the variance, but those are usually minor, you know, ten feet on your front porch or things like that, and I think that, that this goes a step too far, and that there is a reasonable way to accomplish most of these issues, but not have to do it as a big giant leap, make it more incremental. Mr. Adams?
So this is for the entire code? Okay. I will vote no on it also. There's the, like the end grain lots, we really haven't gone over that very much, and council has already said they do not like them, and there's no, you can't tear down a house and build a five, six units and make it affordable, that's not affordable whatsoever, that's the main thing we need to find nowadays, is affordability. We need to get people to be able to buy a house in Inglewood, and as far as the amendments that we went through, I support those, but there's still a lot of work to be done on the, on the entire code, so I can't support the entire code as it is, there's too many things in there that are issues, that are made for development, not for affordability, and that really doesn't, to me, that's not planning, and we're planning and zoning, and we need to do some planning and make the city a quality place to live.
Ms. Hubka?
You know, when I started out with this, with UDC, I was a proponent of the solar analysis, because I thought it was very important that building height did not shadow the building next to it and allow for gardening and what have you, so that is an anti-growth component. I was not able to get a lot of people on board for that, because as we've seen, we have such, we have a lot of other things in code to tackle, and there just wasn't any room for this kind of thing right now with our housing problems, but I am happy with the compromises. So instead of, in my, in the MUR three district, they don't allow a sixty-foot structure like they formerly did, we have a limit of forty feet, unless you can build five or more units. Now, on a lot, seventy-two hundred square feet, that's not possible with the parking requirement to get five units, but that is very possible along the Broadway corridor, and that aids, that will help with affordable housing, just getting that many units. I was also pleased with the design standards that we put together for our, for across the board, but specifically R2, so we don't have any more of this slot homes, and that was two of the main goals I wanted to get through. I think everything else has been a long process that we've talked through, what, two years? And I'm happy with the compromises that we've reached, so I am a yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I really believe that the code must be updated, that our cities, our neighborhoods, Our cities, our neighborhoods are changing, and we need to acknowledge that they will never be what they were thirty, forty, fifty years ago. I believe that what we've put together through expert consultation, through a lot of input from both the public and professionals in planning and housing, that we have a very sensible update, and so, yeah, I'll just leave it at that, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, did you say for the record which way you voted, did I miss it? Okay, thank you. Ms. Prang?
Yes, I will vote yes with the amendments proposed. I very much honor and value the hours and hours and months of discussion that this group, I've only been here for a few, but I know many of you have been here for years. I believe that there was a hearty public engagement process, and I do have confidence that the city has a process in place that if we break it too terribly, it can be fixed. We can, we can pass these proposals tonight, and if it does not meet the needs of our city, then we can go back to council and say we would like to open it back up to amend further, and so with that, I vote yes with the amendment suggested, thank you.
Ms. Keys?
So I think that regardless if we love it or not, the city of Inglewood is growing, as is the entire Denver metro area, and I think the best way to manage influx of people is with smart growth, and I think our code, or this proposed code, does accomplish that with some increased density, but not uncomfortably increased in most of the residential zoning districts, I think it encourages keeping existing structures with the opportunity to expand on additional dwelling units without tearing them down, which sort of keeps the neighborhood character and the fabric of the neighborhood together, so I think there's a lot of really great stuff in this code, and I think it'll help provide guidance for the city in future projects that are proposed, so that Inglewood does stay a place that is great to live in, so for that, I'm a yes.
Ventura Haggerty?
I want to thank everybody for their time here that's on the board, and everybody that stayed in the public. We value every single piece of information that we heard, and we think that what we came up with is something that actually is something that we can move forward with. There was a lot of issues, I think, that we all understand in some of the development code that is as currently written, that allowed for some developments that maybe were undesirable for some people. We cannot live in fear, we have to live in a place where we can grow forward and help each other out, and I firmly believe that the efforts that have been made by staff, by the people here, by our consultant team, have gotten to a product that we can use and move forward and make it more efficient for us to move forward, so I am voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes six-two.
All right, so with that, I believe I can go to staff's choice. Anything, anything from staff? No, no, no. Attorney's Choice, Vicki?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Chair? Chair, this is Brian, I did have something, sorry.
Yes, Brian, please go.
I just wanted to make note that the public hearing for City Council for Code Next is still tentatively scheduled for August twenty-first.
Thank you for that clarification, Brian. Okay, yep. Thank you for that. Commissioner's Choice, I'll come down the line, Carl.
Nothing here.
Brenda?
I'm good, thank you, everybody.
Michelle?
I'm good as well, and I failed to mention that there has been an enormous amount of work by staff, and by Chris, and by Matt, and everybody involved here, and the majority of this thing in this notebook is good, the majority is good, it's just got a little problems with some of the residential things for the most part, but I do appreciate the work and the process that's gone on. I also appreciate the work of the commissioners here, so, because it's an important piece of legislation, and we all need to be a part of it, and that's all I have, thank you.
Michelle, Camille?
Nothing for me.
Kate?
Just say I appreciate all the respectful discussion across mission members, and we don't all agree on things, but I think that was a good discussion to have about different points, and just to reiterate too, that the land use code can only regulate so much, and that we do need, you know, code enforcement, we do need to really think about, in my opinion, maybe some sort of proactive rental inspection, and seeing what some other cities are doing. I think that we, in order to address some of the affordability concerns across the region, that we do need to look at things like the owner occupancy requirements further, or looking at how we, you know, suggest it to sunset them, and really creating more opportunities for people, and my fear is, or my worry is that it's, we're not necessarily using the right tools, so I'd really like the city to explore the appropriate tools in terms of code enforcement, rental inspections, whatever it might be, to address some of the concerns, you know, that are happening today before, you know, that are happening now despite any changes that may occur.
Kate, Tina?
Let's not forget how much of a gem this city is to live in, that's it.
Totally agree, I think we're all here for that reason, thanks to you.
Erin? Yeah, just thank you to the commissioners for your time for these late meetings, for, you know, being the target of public input, or the receiver, or the, however that comes across. So thank you commissioners for your dedication, your input on this, your willingness to spend your time free of charge for the benefit of all of us. I think sometimes folks forget that we are citizens here too, we are residents, we are neighbors, community members, friends, that all just want the best for the city. So thank you all, and then a big thank you again, Chris and your team, staff, it's been a long, it's been a long race, and it's not over yet, but thank you for all your work, and Nancy too, because you make a lot of this happen, so, yeah, thank you to all the staff.
Awesome, just thanks, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, thank you all.
Thank you.